Jerks, how you doing tonight? Late night, almost nine, almost nine. I start a few minutes early. But for me, this is a late night. Eight fifty-four P M. We're gonna do a late show tonight. Solo show, just going over some stuff. Probably be a chill show. Uh, I wanted to thank before, you know, to get started. I forgot the Venmos last night. Venmos and Cash Apps. I want to thank everyone who gave us super chats last night. We also got some Venmos. Please pass the pepper. Said fifty on Venmo last night, said, "Thank you. Thank you. Please pass the pepper." And Deanne sent twenty-five, and she said, "No need to read out loud. I appreciate you. I appreciate you, Deanne." I had to read it anyway. Uh, also, I know we had something in the Cash App too. Hold on one second. Let me pull that up. Wanted to make sure I thank them because I forgot last night. It was. It was a late show. It was a fun show last night. Yeah, Paul, Paul, Paul J. Uh, sent ten dollars, and he said, "Great show, fellas." You get it? Henry Blue, Henry Blue sent ten dollars last night. Wow. I don't, I think that's Henry Blue from Twitter. Is that the one that they accuse of being Karen Reed? I either, I either got money. It's funny. That's a funny one. I just realized who sent it. Hope I didn't blow up their name, their real name. That's funny. So we got some good donations last night, and uh, tonight I wanted to play the Canton Select Board. Because there was a public comment last night that we didn't get to broadcast because we had the show JFK and them. So I want to get back to that. A couple of the Canton residents were reaching out and saying, "I'm gonna broadcast it." I said, "Tomorrow night," which is tonight. So we're gonna open with that tonight. Uh, Brenda Sweeney showed up and spoke very eloquently, very, let me say that again, eloquently. And I see Dennis is here. Dennis Sweeney's in the chat. Hey Dennis, how you doing tonight? So that's what we're gonna begin with. We're gonna kick it off with that. I also, I'm gonna play. Because last night we were up against the meat grinder. We were up against uh, the Defense Diaries with David Yanetti. On the one hand, and then Turtle Boy. So we basically got, we had a good amount of viewers early on, the first half hour, and a lot of people did stick with us, but we didn't grow, and we did lose some when those bigger shows came on. So we didn't get as many viewers as we usually do. We had our diehards, and they were very supportive and very into it, and uh, they're people loved the show last night. So I figure what I'm gonna do is play like probably the last half of the show, the last two hours, where we really talk about Giga. Because I want to put a highlight on that. I want to make sure people get to see that and just spread the awareness of it as much as possible. Uh, if you want to see the Youtuber drama, you can just watch the whole show from the beginning. The first hour is really about that, and then we really get into the, the meat and, the meat and potatoes, the yeah, the heart of it. So uh, I see Canton Chronicle here. Probably gonna start some shit tonight. I can't believe we haven't banned him yet. John and I have a rivalry now. I don't know if people realize that. He's always trying to upstage me. He takes off his shirt every, my show, like that's totally upstaging me. You know, we were kidding yesterday or two days ago on Twitter, pretending that we were gonna do like a a fake fight, John and I. Just to get people going, and then I've made a post, and it was, I made it evident that this is a joke, that I was kidding. And within two minutes, people were calling John, like, like, they thought we were really fighting, like people are really it's funny right now. There's a tension in the Karen Reed movement where people are settling scores now and all kinds of ridiculous now, stuff is going on, even beyond what we talked about on the show last night. And I just, I think comedy, like I'm trying to have fun. I'm trying to laugh at even even the idiots out there. They may not get my comedy, but I am, I'm truly laughing at everything lately. Yeah, the drama. I mean, I sent Nurse Kim a comment that I thought was funny. I thought Nurse Kim might get it. I thought it was funny. Maybe it wasn't funny. I don't know, whatever, but someone thought it was serious, and it's like can't we just have fun? Can we have fun? Like, Nurse Kim got it. Uh, Deborah, Deborah. Said, "What do you think about Kelly Dever?" We can definitely talk about that in a second. Yeah, I also got a couple of messages about Jess Pachado too, like that, you know, because I played that thing, you know, I love it. I think it's funny as hell. I'm glad she said it, like she said, she said what a lot of people have been saying, like you know? She said it. She said Mike is making more of the money-making Mike. Money-making Mike. I mean, she said it. Which I have no issue with her saying that, like I'm not upset with her at all. I think it's hilarious. I think it's because it shows you, I, I think it's hilarious and like true on the spot because it shows you what a lot of people when you see people coming at me. It's that whole thing. It's like jealousy now. I see it like every single time. It's so funny. Money-making Mike. So I'm not mad. I'm not mad at Jess at all. I know JFK was calling her that, that, what was he calling her? He could, yeah, I mean, he, I love JFK. I'm not gonna have it throw shade at him, but if, if I had to correct him on anything, that I would have just said, "Be a little nicer to Jess," but he doesn't have to. He's a grown man. He usually, you know, and anytime I think that with JFK, it turns out he was right, so. So I'm not gonna correct JFK, but I have no issue with Jess. I have no issues with Glara, no issues with Brian from L T L. I've just had, trying to have the like the best time ever lately because it's over. Karen Reed is over. Like that was so fun, but stressful, high stakes, and now it's just like gravy. Everything's gravy now. Everything's fun. I know Aiden's still going through it. But I even feel better about that, you know, and we'll see what happens with Aiden. We will see what happens with Aiden. And it makes it easier too, to just focus on Aiden. That's the thing, like before. It was like we were stretched thin, like we were doing two different things all the time, right? Trying to raise money for two different things. Trying to uh, you know, bring people sometimes to two different hearings at the same day, like things like that were going on. It's like it's much easier now for, for the Free Karen Reed movement and the Free Turtle Boy movement. Alright, so yeah, the Dever News, alright, what do I think about the Dever News? I think Turtle Boy's reporting said it wasn't confirmed. I think he said he got a, either one or two sources. I think he said he had two sources, but he, he, you know, he wasn't you can tell when Turtle Boy's really sure on something where he says, "This is, this is done. This is a done." He, he didn't have that tone. You can tell he wasn't, he wasn't a hundred percent on this. So he put something out. Uh, Howie Carr actually contacted the Boston Police Department, and they said that she's still out on medical leave, like she's still an employee. She hasn't resigned yet. But again, you never know. I mean, it could be, she put in her paperwork and her supervisor still has it in the desk, and he's waiting 24 hours to turn it in. You know, you never know. So who knows? I, I would be doubtful that she would leave when she has medical leave, like you know, like you probably wouldn't give that up, like nobody, nobody, you know, quits a job when they're out on maternity leave. You know what I'm saying? You're like, you you wait when the maternity leave's over, like if you're gonna quit, you know? Same thing with this, I gotta think, with the medical leave, so. I doubt she's quitting until she has to quit, right? We'll see what happens. Oh boy, the Canton Chronicle weighing in. Says BLT is blocked out. Did he unblock you? He said he unblocked people today. I bet he unblocked everybody except for you, John. You did go at him hard. I mean, I don't know, I block people too. You know, if someone, if, if I don't want to look at somebody, if I don't want to see them, they're just annoying me, or I'll block them. You know? There was a lady in uh, whose chat was it? I think it was a Glara chat. There was a lady in there uh, talking about me, and she said something like Mike Crawford blocked me because of my politics. And it's so funny because I don't block people for their politics anymore. That may, that may happen, like you may find that shit from me like 10 years ago. But I don't do that anymore. And if I blocked her, it's because she was annoying. She was annoying and nasty and not nice, like if you don't like me, and you're being nasty to me, why would I have you around? Like, why do I want to put myself through that, you know? So I, I don't I don't know. I, I thought it was, I mean, I understood why he blocked the Glara and you, John, the Canton Chronicle, because you went at him so hard. I think my big, my bigger like kind of issue with what, and kind of the reason I said some of the things I said yesterday on uh, this show with JFK and them about Brian is, you know, the Nurse Kim stuff, like that is just it's like I know how it works with Bettero, you know, booking Bettero. And you're just trying to get him to say yes. And if he says five P M., you're doing five P M. If he says eight P M., you're doing eight. You know, it's, it's really on Bettero, like he's got the schedule. You know, Nurse Kim, I have a feeling is probably the same way. She's probably just saying like, "What time can you do it, lovey? Like, let's do it." You know, and he's giving her a time, and she's checking her nurse's schedule, and she's saying, "I can do that time. Let's do it." Like, not we're trying to get, you know, go against other shows and just none of that, like you're not thinking about that when you're booking Mark Bettero. You're just not. You know? So that, that was the thing that I think is, was weird about the block and stuff. He just got out of control, and I think it just shows you that he thinks people are out to get him. And sometimes that's real, like sometimes people are kind of catty in Two Face. Let's be real. But if you, if you believe that's always the case, it's it's tough. This is a tough being a Youtuber creator, you can look at all your interactions with other Youtubers. It's like in a negative light or a positive light, you know, you can, and I think he definitely needs to uh not focus so much on what everyone else is doing. Unless you like it, you know what I mean? That, that's when you, that's, that's what I try to do, like I if I see something I don't like generally, I don't know, I generally don't talk about it. You know, unless I'm angry, unless I'm like, oh, I'm gonna try to make sure no one watches Grant when he's live on some idiot show, like that's one thing, but like for the most part, I'd like to focus on, especially with my roles, bring up stuff like we did last night with Giga. You know? I'm gonna make Bit my new best friend. Who's Bit? I don't even know what you're talking about, Johnny. Bit. I thought we were getting into war, and now you're in here. Now you're in here chatting, chatting up a storm and supporting me and giving me, like I said, a, a super chat to go after Brian, of course. You're not nice. You call me, would you, John started calling me a fence sitter. Mike's a fence sitter. Alright, you guys, you've had your BLT time. Maybe I'll bring up Ryan today. I'll hit up Ryan, see if he wants to come on the show and really piss off Como. Como, would you come on with BLT? That would be hilarious. I don't think I'm gonna do it tonight though. Maybe, maybe like uh, tomorrow night. Or this weekend. Think about it. Yeah, it's funny too, like uh, this, this right here, Dave. It's not really true though. Like if I had gone headfirst into that drama, like JFK said, I would have got a huge pop. Remember when Sean McDonough was going through his shit? I think I did one or two shows where I mentioned Sean, and I got a fucking huge pop off those shows, just myself. Spur of the moment, like no planning, boom, 50,000 views. So people do like drama. People do. And if I had done a show uh, like JFK did the night before, and you know, kind of promoted it, or, or like the Glara did for three and a half hours, I would have got the views. I would have got a lot of views. But the thing is is it like, like JFK said, does it nourish your soul? Does it nourish the audience's soul? And what is it attracted? It attracts an audience generally I don't like. I want, I want people to be here for community. And kind of support the good stuff. Like you could be a show that focuses on like exposing all the bad in the community. That's fine, like that's, I'm not saying that's negative. Because sometimes we need that, like like a Turtle Boy, right? But for me, I just know what I like to do. I like to like lift people up and and kind of cover the shit that's not getting covered that should be being covered like Giga last night. That was, that's why I had those guys on. And that's why we're gonna play their two hours where they just went through it. Those three guys, Kevin Cav, James Jackson, and uh, JFK show off. Phenomenal last night. They were so good. The only bad parts of the show is when I was talking. I talked too much last night. I got my feelings about K O P. I couldn't help it. But I, I love those guys. They, they, this is, that was a good show last night. I'm gonna, I'm gonna replay a little bit. Let's get to the Canton Select Board. Let's talk in with the chat. Let's talk with Como. Let's see what happened last night at the Canton Select Board. Guess why? Chris Albert was friggin' there. Chris Albert was there this time. Alright, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna remove myself. I'm gonna play this Canton Select Board. I'm gonna shut the hell up for a few minutes and let the speakers speak, because I don't like when people talk over it, and I know myself. Anytime I play video, I, I cut in front, like you know, it's fine. A lot of times we do review video. But for Canton Select Board, I have a kind of history of doing this, where we just play the speaker. So I'm gonna disappear for a few minutes and just let you hear. I think there's three speakers. Brenda is one of them. There's another woman too. Uh, she's on Twitter. Uh, she's interesting. I'm gonna listen to what she says on the headphones. Uh, if you don't have headphones, you may want to try them out because these uh, select board meetings are notoriously not very great on StreamYard, on volume. We turn them up as loud as we can. But uh, I don't think the volume's that great this time. And, and again, I'm turning it up as loud as I can. I'm making sure we even have the uh, bass override. Let me just make sure I have everything set up. Yeah, we do. Voice boost is on. Everything's good. Yeah, it was a very good show last night. I'm like kind of amped about it, gotta say. But it's funny, like you'd expect I'd be a little down because the views weren't, you know, 50,000 or even 10,000. But it's, it's about the content, you know? And it's about those guys last night. And knowing that we brought those views on those three channels, considering the, the competition we were against, it's pretty damn good, actually. It's pretty damn good that people stuck with us. I'm surprised as many people stuck with us, considering who was on the air against us. Oh, Dennis Sweeney. Yeah, that's exactly what I, that's what I love. That's why I'm happy as fuck lately, Dennis. I mean, you must be feeling a little better too, Dennis. I know you're, you're probably still a little on edge about your town, but at the same time, you must feel, I, I gotta think, I'm wondering, do you feel a little better or, because I do. I feel like a little more relaxed. And especially seeing what's going on with your police chief. And one thing I'm gonna put in the chat right now. And I want to thank, thank Canton Community Television. If you ever want to wa, if you want to watch the rest of the Select Board meeting, Canton Community Television is where you can watch it. The entire Select Board, they have all their government meetings, their planning board. They are so phenomenal. But they linked, they have a link on Canton Community Television, which I didn't know about, is about a police selection, police chief selection survey. So the residents of Canton can tell their Select Board leaders what they want and the new police chief, what they're looking for. And so I'm gonna post that in the chat. If you're a Canton resident and you don't know about it, you haven't done it, hit up that survey, share it with everyone in your family. Make sure everyone is letting the Canton Select Board know what you want in the new police chief search. And I'm posting that in the chat right now. Alright, I'm gonna take a break here. Money Mike is here. I will be back. But uh, for right now, I'm gonna, I'm gonna buzz off. And I'm just gonna play the beginning of the Select Board hearing until uh, we get through the public comment, and then I'll come right, I'll be right back. Yeah, and there's gonna be so much upcoming, Dave. We got Sandra Birchmore, we got Missy Cash, we got uh, Brian Walsh, we got uh, who else we got? We got Aiden Carney, Turtle Boy. We have a lot. We have a lot on our plate, and we have uh, elections. We have Michael Morrissey. Will he run again? There's a lot coming up here. And there's other stuff I think, hopefully, keep your fingers crossed for me. Because I think something good, I think I'm gonna be announcing something maybe soon. It seems like it. Something, something kind of fun, something interesting, and something that you guys kind of made it, all of you, you jerks made it happen. I gotta say, you made it happen for me the last couple of years. As much as we credit Bettero and Mazza and all the guests and even myself, my hard work, it's about you guys. You, you really made it. Watching you watch us, it made a big difference for me. And it's amazing. Life-changing, actually. I get to do this all the time now, you know, it's just I can't believe it, actually. Alright, let's get to the video. Mike, shut up. See, I'm just happy. I'm very grateful. Alright, let's put
Uh, welcome to the Select Board meeting of August nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Um, at seven P M. At the Sala Meeting Room, Memorial Hall, eight oh one Washington Street, Canton, Mass. Uh, this evening's uh, proceedings will be recorded by Canton Community Television, and it will have later viewing dates, but it's being recorded live now. Um, this evening also, uh, Select Board member Michael Laufren, he is on vacation. He won't be joining us. And Select Board member Trish Boydin has a wedding in Italy for her daughter, so we wish them both well. Um, as we go forth, I just wanted to take a moment to recognize a gentleman that the town of Canton has lost in the past week, Mr. Charles Chacamondo. Uh, Chacamondo served this town for many, many years on the uh, zoning board of appeals and on the building renovation committee. I myself had the pleasure of serving with him. And uh, he was truly be missed. He is responsible for multiple buildings that have been done in this town. Uh, from Metropolitan, Metropolitan Rink to the pool, the senior center, expansions to both elementary schools. Uh, he sat on the Paul Revere Heritage, uh, through which, all its hearings on the zoning board of fields. Uh, he will be truly missed. I consider him a very close friend, and I will miss him dearly. So if you just bear with me a moment, I would just like to read this. Charles Chuck J. Armando, a lifelong member of Canton Community, passed away on August tenth, two thousand and twenty-five, surrounded by his family. Born on April eighth, nineteen forty-four in Canton, Mass. To Gabriel and Patricia Armando, Chuck's life was a testament to the power of kindness and the impact one person can have on the lives of so many. Chuck's journey began in a town he would call home for his entire life. He was the beloved husband of Patricia F. Armando. He was devoted father to his children, Andrea Starr and her husband Kenny of Canton, Gary Armando of Canton, and Michael Armando and his wife Marsha of Canton. His love extended to his grandchildren, Ava and Grace Starr, and Lucia and Vivian Armando, whom he adored. He was a brother to Richard Armando and his wife Marie of Sharon, and was predeceased by his siblings, Lorraine Whitmore and Robert Armando. Chuck graduated from Canton High School and went on to earn his associate degree from Northern, Northeastern University. His service to his country was marked by his time in the Army Reserves from nineteen sixty-four to nineteen sixty-eight. His career as a structural steel detailer began at Antonelli Iron Works in Quincy, went on to start his own business, The Chapman Group, where he worked until his retirement. Chuck's involvement in his hometown was multifaceted. He was an active member of the Canton Town Club. His commitment to the community was evident as he was appointed a member of the zoning board and the building renovations committee. He led fundraising efforts to benefit the students of the Mass Hospital School and the Papa Center. And he volunteered numerous hours at various town recreation events. He was a familiar face at Wampertop Country Club, where he enjoyed playing in the Canton Town Club, Monday Night Golf League for over forty years. Chuck's legacy is one of unwavering love for his family, steadfast service to his community, and a life lived with enthusiastic participation. He has left an indelible mark on the hearts of those who knew him, and his spirit will continue to inspire all who was fortunate enough to have been part of his journey. Chuck will be deeply missed, but never forgotten. Let's take a moment of silence for Mr. Chacamondo. Thank you very much. Uh, next we have public comment. And uh, before we do public comment, I'd like to read a statement, as we always do. Public comment of the meeting is an opportunity to listen to residents' feedback and concerns. However, it is not meant to be a question and answer format. There'll be no response to any public comment when presented. The public comment portion of the meeting is limited to fifteen minutes, total, and up to three minutes per speaker. Those of which to speak should stand at the microphone and wait to be recognized by the chair. Please state your name and the town you live in. Your address is not required. I would also ask members of the audience to be respectful of each other, of each speaker as well as each other. Anyone that does not wish to speak or is unable to do so due to the time limit may submit their comments in writing for the board's review and consideration. That being said, we shall start public comment and your name and town, please.
Sure. I'm Rachel Wallace. I live in Quincy. Um, I'm a two thousand and four Canton High School graduate. I'm sure you all know who I am. Um, I think everybody on the board sitting in front of me tonight, I believe fundamentally understands why I'm upset. Um, that I have been aggrieved and that my family has experienced a deep institutional betrayal for my being forthcoming and speaking up about Sandra Birchmore and domestic violence. Instead of singling anybody out, I wrote a poem about the circus I have witnessed unfold since two thousand and twenty-two, wherein our elected officials have done the very most to silence victims and dodge accountability. Sorry. "The time has come," the woman said, "to talk of many things, of guns and drugs and child support, of glory days and kings, and why the rez is boiling hot, and whether pigs have brains." "A portable gun range," the chief said, "is what we chiefly need. Kitchens and riot shields besides are very good indeed." "Now, if you're ready, taxpayer dear, we can begin to feed." "But not on us," the women cried, turning a little blue, "after such kindness that would be a dismal thing to do." "The night is fine," the officer said. "Do you admire the view?" "It was so kind of you to come, and you are very nice," the men said nothing, "but cut us another slice." "I wish you were not so deaf. I've had to ask you twice." "It seems a shame," the police officer said, "to play them such a trick after we'd brought them out so far and made them trot so quick." "The men said nothing, but the butters spread too thick." "I weep for you," the policeman said. "I deeply sympathize." With sobs and tears, he sorted out those of the largest size, holding his semi-automatic before his streaming eyes. "Oh, women," said John Conley, "you've had a pleasant run. Shall we be trotting home again?" But answer came there none, and this was scarcely odd because they'd silenced everyone. Um, a couple of quick personal, uh, a couple of comments that I have in regards to what has transpired the past three years. I feel the audit was not in fact an audit. I didn't see any numbers. It was a poorly orchestrated P R campaign. The response to domestic violence is abhorrent, to say the least. Uh, that's an issue that is tasked to the police department through the Department of Public Health, um, and our memorandum of understanding with them. What I've experienced the past two and a half years is downright alarming. Not just from a personal perspective, but from a public health perspective as a taxpayer. It has cost the women of this community our sense of collective safety, our sense of collective wellness, our peace, and our faith that the present system will act to protect and support women and children.
Thank you. Uh, next, sir?
I, I would like to follow up on my recent presentation to this board, uh, and encourage anyone looking for or considering pursuing a new job opportunity to attend the Canton Community Job Fair. The job fair is being sponsored by the Economic Development Committee in conjunction with Canton Association of Business and Industry. And the Mass Higher Metro Southwest Career Center. It will be held on Wednesday, September tenth, from ten A M. To one P M. At the Bank of Canton's corporate office at four ninety Turnpike Street. There is no cost to attend, but attendees must pre-register. We have a number of local employers with just a few tables available. And the current employers that have registered have over a hundred jobs available for which they want to hire. I also want to take a moment to thank uh Town Administrator Charlie Duty for his idea to spread the word on this event. At his suggestion. I contacted Canton Community TV and I also contacted the Canton Citizen. Canton Community TV conducted a short interview with me earlier today in which I provide additional information about this event. So I would encourage people to seek that out. This interview will soon be available to view on demand. C C T V will also be including details about our job fair on their website bulletin board and on the local cable channels. The Canton Citizen will be adding this event to their datebook with all the key information for time and, and location and how to register. Plus, we are working together on a, a press release to share with everyone in an upcoming edition of the paper. In closing, I would like to encourage anyone that is interested in finding a new job or career opportunity to register for and attend this job fair. Thank you for the opportunity to help spread the word.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Thank you.
Breaking the microphone. Uh, Brenda Sweeney, Canton. My humble opinion. You know that pins and needles sensation in your legs when you know something's wrong that needs to be fixed? Reminds me of the pins and needles of anxiety. Our local murderers must be on pins and needles now that a disaster is brewing. D A Morrissey should be our white hat for justice, but he's a black hat orchestrating cover-ups around the county. Just on route, Sandra Birchmore, Karen Reed, to name a few. Morrissey's quick to ensure the guilty can hide behind him when he, while he uses the very power his office affords to make it all go away. Canton's very own killers are still hiding behind his skirts to this day. And remember all you lovelies that helped? When the chips are down, they'll discard you, just like they did John. Some leaders in Canton took a page right out of Morrissey's playbook when, when we protested. Sicking rafferty on us to tie up our time and our money in the court system they thought they owned. Just like Morrissey's O U I debacle, Canton wasted copious amounts of tax dollars for harmless rubber ducks. Ending with a simple littering offense. What a joke. The hunted has become the hunter. Karen Reed was acquitted. Now her legal team's filing a civil suit for violation of her constitutional rights. Serving subpoenas to the Massachusetts State Police and the Norfolk County D A's office, among others. Thanks to poor leadership, Canton's no probable cause behavior probably puts us on that shortlist, too. A question for Helina, who's looking who in the eye now? Boston twenty-five Jester reported a case where a jury awarded a man sixty million dollars for conduct done with malice or in reckless disregard of his rights by a prosecutor and a cop. Mister Duty should get on the horn with town council, then warn the taxpayers to buckle up. It'll be a doozy for sure. We heard Barros and Lucky, rock stars with integrity tell the truth. Doctors Wolf, Renshler, Russell, Lopasada, masters up in, in their field up against a guy with a fake degree. And the Blue Man Group wannabe who had flashbacks to the seventies and did the bump with the Lexus. That was the tip of the iceberg. So much more is coming in the civil trial. So we're asking the murderers still walking Canton's streets, how bad are those pins and needles now, now that Matthew Farwall's in jail? And full of information he can trade to get out of the death penalty. Plus, the civil suits on the horizon, a double whammy. Must be like staring down the tracks at a locomotive freight train heading straight at you. That sensation must be traveling up your other leg by now. Pretty soon, both legs will be engulfed in pins and needles. We're looking forward to the day when you collapse because you don't have a leg to stand on. We'll be back. We're ordering more ham sandwiches to share while we watch the train wreck. By the way, rumor has it Kelly Dever resigned today. Another crack in the armor. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody who wants to speak, anybody else? Seeing none, Mister Albert?
All right, Chris up on the agenda for tonight. Um, public hearing regarding the application for the transfer of a section twelve all alcohol liquor license. With a pledge of license and a common victuals license from Rosglow LLC, D B A The Hillside Pub. To O Crisp LLC, D B A The Hillside Pub located at number two Royal, Royal.
Just for the hillside, come on, that's their club. That's where they get shitfaced. Oh, man. I, I said I was gonna stop at a public comment, but I almost wanna continue to play it, cause this is, this is where Chris starts salvage. You know, he gets a very excited alcohol licenses. Oh, my God. Typical Canton, typical Canton. They spend so much time on alcohol, day licenses and transfers and. That was so good, Brenda. Brenda killed it. I love when she said, Blue Man Group wannabe, a Blue Man Group wannabe. She came up, she has some good lines there. That was so good, Brenda. I think I'm done. I, I, as much as I wanna hear about the hillside, I think we're gonna move on from Chrissy Albert tonight. Good night, Chrissy. Good night. Enjoy, enjoy your last months on the Canton Select Board. That's the other thing. We have uh more Canton Select Board elections coming up. You know, there's gonna be more elections. We're not done. We're not done. We may just take more nights off and just take it slow, but we're not done. There's more, and there will be spurts and, you know, when things happen. So I, I just wanna thank uh the super chats tonight. I wanna thank everyone who's watching. You gotta thank Deborah. Thank you so much, Deborah. Thank you to Canton Chronicle. Thank you for throwing a shiv in the L T L. You're, you're so mean, John. Maybe you guys should uh smoke the peace pipe. I know, I know L T L doesn't, and never had a beer, never smoked a joint. I don't think John smokes weed. I think I'm gonna have to bring you guys together in a uh, in a teepee. And, and we'll do like a medicine shaman thing. And we'll get you wicked stoned. And you guys will start hugging it out. Thank you, John. Thank you, Dennis. Yeah, puff puff peace. Sometimes it doesn't work, though. We were talking about that with JFK. Sometimes people get into psychotic. It makes it worse. They need a gummy. I know. They need a gummy. Can we all get along? Alright, I'm a fence sitter. That's what John says. She says I'm a fence sitter. Alright. I gotta, let's, let's do this. I, I wanna uh, I'm gonna kick back tonight. I, I wanna play this from last night, JFK. This is like fifty-two minutes in. If you wanna watch all the gossip from last night, it's like the first hour. You can replay that, but I'm just gonna go right to what we were doing last night on the show. Because I think, I want more people to watch this, especially about the Giga stuff. And Saturday, there is a standout in Haverhill. I'd like to see more people there. Apparently Dennis Sweeney's going. I'd love to see a lot of free Karen Reed people show up in Haverhill. I have a dog that uh, you know, has been staying here for a few weeks. Saturday, their owner's coming back to pick them up. I'm not sure of the time. So that's why I don't know. It depends on when the owner gets back to me and lets me know what time they're picking up their dog. Whether I could actually go out there. But if I can't do it this Saturday, I'd probably go to next Saturday. But I hope people go. I wanna see people out there. And I'd love to be there if I can. We'll see what happens on Saturday. But uh, let's play this.
It's like, in an opportunity, you know, when somebody gives you an opportunity, that, hey, they're giving me an opportunity, it might not work out. And I'm not gonna be salted. I appreciate the opportunity. And it's kinda like the same thing with awareness and, and attention. And I feel like there's no replay value on what they were doing. Like, I'm not gonna go back and watch the glare of four-hour stream. I'm sorry, I'm not doing it. This, cause that's attention. It was a pop. It was like a pop, you know? Okay, cool. But the awareness is what people go back and rewind and replay and get something out of it and take with them. And that's what I try to shoot for, replay value and awareness. And I think that's what we need to focus on, but, but, you know, but like you said, my man Sean Mooney, you know, he was murdered. And um, it's the, it's an ugly word, man. And I know John O'Keefe was murdered. I know Marquis Simmons was murdered. And I know that Francis Gigolotti, while we're here tonight, was murdered by these police. And um, well, should I say? He ended up dying at the hands of them, right? And, and, and the same, and the same thing with, you know, um, big bad Brian A. And Higgins. I don't think they meant to kill him. But they did. And then they covered it up and it became a murder. So now as far as Marquis Simmons goes, that was a straight-up murder. You know what I mean? He went there to kill him, shoot him, that's it. You shoot somebody, you know what you're going to do. So, and, and that's another thing, like. The families that are affected by it, when you mentioned, like, I know about the murder word, right? Cause I know guys have been murdered. Like, it's, 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 it's a weird feeling. Um, it's an ugly feeling and, like, I seen my beef, uh, not beef. The right word, my um, issue with creators when I was going on these little shows, Bedtime Magic with Kevin Kev. James Jackson, when he was flying to Cessna some nights and he couldn't come on. We were speaking to that, I was watching some, you know, Beddero too. I was watching Beddero, like the big dogs. I was watching Beddero, watching Melanie Little. And everybody screaming Scapiccio, Scapiccio, she's such a beast. Yay. And they're go, and they're loving the fact that they're tearing up Lally. They're loving the fact that they're tearing down this wall. And I'm like, yeah, but you know, knowing better, knowing that. You guys never mentioned the dude who died, though. Marquis Simmons. Right? And this guy, Mizzy Cash, the rapper, is out on a ten thousand dollar bill. And behind the bullshit. Laughing at Lally. And like, that's what I'm saying. Like, you gotta be very mindful of how this all works. You can't like just overlook that because you just think it's funny to just look at Lally on the stand. Cause in the end, Marquis Simmons is dead. And in the end, Miles King's gonna end up with a deal that he can't confu- uh, can't refuse. And he's gonna walk on murder. All behind this scumbag Proctor. And who wins? Who wins? You know, the family's gonna be fucked up in the head. And, you know, and it's crazy, cause I, my grandmother, you know, my uncle was murdered in the North End back in eighty-three. My cousin Jay Janoni's dad, if anybody knows who Jay Janoni is, you could Google him. My, my Uncle Duffy, same thing. He was twenty-two years, the guy who murdered him was twenty-two years old. He was thirty-six. They stabbed him in the heart. My grandmother never was the same, bro. Never was the same. And you know what he ended up doing? The guy ended up doing ten years and that's it. And my grandmother never was the same, ever. Like, just never was the same. So murder sucks, man. So before you laugh and clap and say Scapiccio, Scapiccio. And, and think it's so cool what she's doing. I get it, she gotta do her job. And it is great what she's doing. She's slick. And how crazy, how far does them tentacles reach? Because then you go a step further and you say, well, where does she originate from? She originates from the Sean Ellis case, right? And she got Sean Ellis off the trial for. But then again, she also, she also got another cat off, a rape case. And his name's Gary Zerola. And he's upstate right now. He was a lawyer and he raped like six girls. He finally got caught up on one of them. So I mean, my point is, what I'm trying to make is like, these lawyers that we're holding on these pedestals, at the end of the day, they got a different type of stomach. They don't look at it the way you look at it. They're not invested. They look at it guilty, not guilty, they move on.
I'll stop there. When comments come in, I, I may address them while we're playing this tonight, come up and out. But uh, here's, here's a comment. And I think it's a good comment to put up. And I, and I, I feel where they're coming from. Welch's Emotional Support Laptop said. Didn't like this part from JFK. We aren't celebrating an, an alive or possibly going free. We are celebrating the Mass State Police and Norfolk County District Attorney's Office being held accountable. I get it. But he's also saying, hey, how many of you have talked about Marquis Simmons? I mean, even me. I've said his name a few times. On Howie Carr Radio. You know who said it first? Was uh Grace Curly, actually. She says his name. But a lot of us haven't, you know, haven't been focusing on that part of it so much, right? I mean, think about what you're focusing on. That's all he's saying. He's not, he's not trying to shit on people. He's just saying, maybe, maybe think about this perspective. Think about Marquise and his mom. Maybe we should talk more about Marquise and his mom. And I think that's also good for the general public, too, because. You know, we can all love that Proctor and them are going down, but there's real victims here, you know? So I, I think. He's talking about victims. You can't fault him for that, you know? So I, I, I get what you're saying, but I get what JFK's saying, too. You know, the, and you heard what he said. This is why JFK handles things the way he does, because people he knows have, have had beef and died. You know, and he breaks it down, what he thinks happened with this Mizzy Cash and Marquise. And just like that, street beef, just guys shooting their mouths off, probably on Facebook. That's how it starts now, social media. So I, I think he's got a lot of valid things to say and. I think it's just good to look at things from a different perspective at times. And he's one of those guys that will remind you. Hey, maybe we should look at this. Maybe we should be talking about Marquise, Marquis Simmons.
And I think about it, Beddero goes down into Holden Tanks in Brooklyn and talks to dudes who are crying. I just wanna go home. And he's sitting there, gotta hold this shit together and say, don't worry about it. We're gonna try to get you out. And he's gonna go eat a sandwich. He's gonna go watch a Celtics game and go on the Young Jerks and act like nothing happened. That shit's traumatizing the court basements, man, being around that. So like, that's what they're about. So you gotta understand, and that's our main thing. We try to stress how dirty and raunchy the system is.
Exactly. And, and Sarah, you're so on point. That's exactly what's, what we have on the screen right there is the point that he's making. And don't, you know, it's not that he doesn't like Beddero or Scapiccio. Uh, he knows that, how important they are to the clients they have, especially when they're, some of the people are innocent. I've talked to JFK. He got sure, he got in some legal trouble for shit he didn't do, you know? So he knows the power of a good attorney. He's just saying, for us as in the audience and even us as YouTubers, like, we idolize and talk about the attorneys maybe a little too much when we should be talking about victims a little more. And it's fine to talk about how great Scapiccio or Beddero and, you know, we love them. I love them. You know, but we should be talking about the victims, too. That's a big thing that happens a lot. Like, you look at uh, going back to like Charles Manson. Like, everyone knows who Charles Manson is, but do, do, do you know who like uh, Vator, you know, I can't even say the names, but like all the victims. People know maybe Sharon Tate, but do you know the other victims? Like, it's always the, you know, we forget the victims. We do. Alright, so let's, let's get back to this and I'll shut the hell up. I'm gonna remove myself again. But you can chat and, and we, we can, you know, disagree or have different viewpoints. I like the conversation.
If that makes sense.
Doesn't make, totally. And I like that uh, how real you guys are. Like, in, in your, it's local, like, the sort of thing. I, it, it's funny, cause as a, as a viewer, I do view some of the YouTube streams. And as much as I, I love Beddero, Beddero's my guy, you know, obviously. He's, he's done so much for me and the show and all of us, but um. Like, there's a big-time lawyer on tonight against us, you know? And I'd watch this show over that lawyer. I would. Just, cause, and I'm not bad about them. And I understand why a lot of people are gonna be watching that lawyer. But it's like, I don't know, it just, I agree with you. It does something about uh, kinda like what we're doing. Like, I gotta say it, like, you know, and I'm not trying to sound cocky or anything, but we actually care. We're trying to, we're trying to bring awareness. Like, this stuff matters to us. You know what I mean? So. You know, like, let's talk about Jigga, cause this is the.
Yeah, let's go. Let's, let's go.
Who wants to start? I'd say JFK probably, right? It's.
No, no, we'd like, let James, with that, you know.
James, okay.
Yeah, let's, 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 how about this? Let's Kevin Kev start that.
Yeah, Kevin Kev, you can start.
Sure. First and foremost, Mike, I appreciate, you know, the opportunity to speak on this. Because it's something that really hasn't been spoke on much. And uh, you know, I, I, I really appreciate it. I mean, the only way I could start this off is that, and uh, you know, my partners here, they could vote, they could vouch for this. I don't know Jigga. I never met Jigga. Alright, Francis Gigolotti. Never met this guy in the, a day of my life. But to hear him scream for help and listen to his voice get quieter and quieter, the shit bothered me. We seen this on live T V. We seen him get suffocated by seven cops in Haverhill, Massachusetts. We seen him get suffocated by seven cops in Haverhill, Massachusetts. And you know, the one thing I can say is that with the work that James and JFK have done with getting out there with their boots on the ground and meeting up with some family members and getting some clarity on what type of person that Francis Gigolati was. You know, it brings a lot of light to the table. This guy could have been one of, you know, one of my best friends just by listening to his backstory. Okay? He was a dedicated person. He had a craftsmanship. He had things and opportunities that he could have still moved forward on. And you know, during these, these, this whole situation with, you know, understanding who Francis Gigolati is and was. He's had some tragic things happen in his life and with his family. I mean, to, 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 to put a little, little bit of context to that, he had a brother. 10 years ago, he drowned. They just finally got some clarity on that 10 years later. That family suffered for 10 years, not knowing where, where their brother was, where their son was, where their grandson was. Few years back, Francis Gigolati's sister was tragically struck hit and run. And they still don't know who did that. No one's come forward. No one's given that family any clarity on that. And to see what happened to Jigga, Francis Gigolati at one o'clock in the afternoon must be devastating for that family.
And I'm here. Died too? Did the sister die too in that hit?
The sister, the sister died.
Holy shit.
And the, and the person that hit her was never stopped, you know, they didn't stop. She, they were never charged. Uh, so this, go ahead, Kevin Kev, I'm sorry.
They're living with that. That person's living with that. That, that person lays his head down or that, that woman lays her head down and she lives with hitting that girl.
Yeah, okay. But his, his mom is, is living with not knowing what happened to the doc, well, knowing, but not knowing who did it.
That's right.
Um, and also I, I mean, it's just, you can't make this shit up, what happened to this family. So we didn't find that out until we had her on the show. I, I'm sorry, Kev, you're good? You're done?
Yeah, man. Take, take, take it, take it off, man. Um, I get a little worked up sometimes.
I know you do. Kev is passionate about the case.
That was really good.
We, we all are very passionate. JFK and I got to go out there and meet the family and talk with them. We got a, we got some interviews with them. But we didn't get that, we didn't get to hear about all that, what Kevin Kev just broke down until we had Becker on the show the other night. And um, man, when she broke that down and we, and we talked about this too, all, all three of us. We said, what if he was going through some mental issues and, or he was just thinking of, you know, his mental health was off? And, and there it is. His sister, his brother lost it, like literally lost at sea. They, they find remains 10 to 11 years later. They, I don't, whatever they find, they bring back to the family. It can't be much, you know, I hate to say it like that, but after 11 years in the ocean. But um, and then to witness, right? What happened to Francis? And go to the standouts and meet his family, meet his mom. His mom hasn't seen the tape yet. She said she can't watch the tape. You know, so we seen the tape. It's almost like uh, parallel to the waterfall, how JFK and I went out to the waterfall to see how, you know, that show that it wasn't as big as it was. We wanted to go out there and just get the feel. So same thing, we did the fairview, all that. But we went out there to Haverhill. We went to the seafood place. We went inside. We spoke with the people inside the seafood place. I mean, Francis, a lot of people in that community, they really liked him. He was a good guy. He was not like, you know, people wanna put drugs on it or, you know, uh, streets of Haverhill or whatever, mental health. It doesn't matter. That's not what killed him. What killed him was seven police officers standing on his neck. Pig pile on him and he's screaming, I can't, I can't breathe. He's shouting. He's not shooting at nobody. He was shouting, I can't breathe. I can't breathe. So it, it's horrible, man. And I think the more awareness and um, that we get out there with this case and the more people get tuned into knowing who Francis Gigolati was and these standouts, you know, like Becca said, had said, she told us that they're starting to get a little bit bigger. Um, and that's great. That's great news. I actually saw Dennis Sweeney post that he was gonna be at the next one. So I'm happy to hear that.
Do you know when the next one is? Cause I, I like to start going to some of these.
Um, well, they, they have a, Natalie, I don't know if you can put the Facebook group up in the chat.
Is it the page? I just posted it in the Young Jerks.
Yeah, there's a, there's a Facebook. So there's a standout.
I think they do them like every Saturday. They're gonna start going back.
Every Saturday. It's right here, Mike. It's Natalie Dunn. Just put it up in the chat.
Perfect. And I, and I did, uh,
I'll send you, I'll send you the link, link to the group behind the scenes.
Yeah, I, I actually have the, I pinned the group. I, I looked it up. Every time I'm looking down, I'm, I'm pinning stuff in the chat in our chat and I put the uh, the group is pinned at the top of the YouTube chat. If you're watching on the Young Jerks, you can click on that and join. I hope everyone does. Earlier I put, put their uh, donation fund. They have a, a fundraiser as well for the family. But right now I put the group, so I hope everyone hits that group up and starts joining if you're not already part of it. I'm definitely joining it tonight. And I'd love to check out some of those standouts.
Yeah. And just to be clear, the standout, right? It's like in the park, it's like equivalent to like the Salem Commons. So it's a real nice area and you know, and that's the thing, like we was out in Haverhill, me and James was blown away about how nice people were.
Oh, Haverhill's nice. It's like, I mean, that's the downtown area. Cause I, yeah, I'm, that's my neck of the woods. Like I used to hang out in Haverhill a lot. Got a lot of friends that grew up in Haverhill, used to play baseball over there and uh, the outside.
Money making Mike, fucking dude, he's out there, son. Money making Mike was in Haverhill getting all the breads.
Hey, Haverhill's like, yeah, maybe we, we used to get fights with kids. My, my brother is funny. My brother played a little league game. But, and I was there watching my brother. He struck out like eight kids from Haverhill and like uh, the moms attacked him. We like, we need a police escort out of town. Cause he Haverhill's like that though. There's a lot of, a lot of fights. They like to fight.
Well, you know, the thing is, the point being is, is that if you do go to a standout, my point is it's real calm. It's real cool. It's nice out there. There's a stigma that's attached to this whole thing. And I think like stigma, like not only nostalgia can get you killed. You know, you get back with some friends in the neighborhood, you get back with a girl, you feel the certain feeling, uh, or you, you know, you just wanna go out, go to the bars one night, go bar hopping, you drink too much, you jump in your car and you kill a family. Nostalgia could get you fucked up. Not only can nostalgia get you fucked up, but stigmas can just fuck the whole game up because the stigma is attached to this. Like it's equivalent to like, oh, he must've did drugs. They're already shaping what happened, right? They're saying that they arrested a crack dealer and they have a witness. It's a 60 year old witness who's saying he witnessed the crack dealer sell crack to um, Francis Gigolati. Now they're already shaping it up like, oh, well, he did this crack or this drug. And as we were trying to arrest him, he happened to have a fucking overdose. Well, that's not what happened, right? And that's how they already, and, and that's the, and that's the, the parallel to the Karen Reed case. They're already trying to shape in the window of opportunity and frame up, window frame up. They're trying to frame it up. And that's what they're doing. And it's like, that's not what happened. And that stigma that's attached to that city, Lawrence, right next door, Lynn's down the street, Salem, you know, Essex County. It's like, oh, well, you know, he shouldn't have resisted. He shouldn't have did drugs and this would have never happened. Well, fuck you. How's that sound? Right? Because that's not what happened. Because when, first off the bat, when they rolled up to him, Mike, the very first time, now this, this, this is what's, it, you know, I don't know what the DA is gonna do, be clear, because they asked the question to the DA. And now the DA used to be the mayor of Salem. I don't know if you're familiar with that. The DA in Essex County.
Tucker, yeah.
Oh, so he was
Chief of Salem.
Oh, the police chief. Oh, so he was the mayor and the police chief?
Actually, I don't think he was the mayor, actually. I think
Okay, so I got that wrong.
He might be related to the, the old mayor. I'm not sure, but I know he definitely, he was the police chief and the state rep. That's what he was. Yeah.
Money making Mike, man. He got all the
I, I know him because of weed. He was against, he was kind of uh, actually like a cool cop on weed. Like it's weird. So like, I know.
So just to, to um, put some context to it, they asked him, what do you feel about the video? In the uh, news press conference and he said, it speaks for itself. Now that kinda gives you hope. Because it kinda speaks to itself because cause this 90, this 90 minutes of uncut video of Francis Gigolati, like in the psychosis, I would like to call it disclaimer. I don't mean it that way, like at any wrong thing. And let me just, let's talk, talk about weed for a second, how, how it could just be weed that could get you like that.
Totally.
Because um, when we were smoking weed back in the day, it was only 12%. If that, no, excuse me, 2% THC, 2%, now it's 12%.
Yeah.
What do you think?
I think it's more than 12. I think it's at like 26.
I mean, if, if you're doing dabs, it could be like uh, or hash. I mean, even back in the day, even in the seventies, we still had hash. There was still, you know, I
But I'm saying the weed, the bunk weed, the mids we used to smoke back in the day, how much percentage of THC was that, Mike? You know?
I don't know. I think five to 10% maybe, you know, like they always say two to three percent. That's kind of a lie. But I, I think the big thing on weed, I gotta say, my experience on weed, it does affect some people differently.
Yeah, no, that's what I'm saying. Like
Some people, some people, uh, it doesn't even matter on the TH percentage. It's some people like have an allergy to it, like a mental allergy where it creates a psychotic episode.
Yeah, there you go.
It can definitely happen and there's no doubt. I've seen it happen to one of my friends growing up and uh, he, he's the nicest, smartest kid, great athlete. And all of a sudden you see him just turn instantly.
Bug out, right? Fight or flight, fight or flight.
Get that synthetic, that's synthetic.
And the synthetic shit's even worse. Yeah.
Yeah, it's worse.
Easier.
But I love that you just said that, an allergy to the mind, how you broke that down. That's awesome that you said that because that puts a lot of, I'm gonna go back and watch what you said because, and I'm gonna clip that because that, especially coming from you. That means everything because I always try to put the context to it. Cause I seen dudes smoke weed and they just get paranoid. They start, you know, and I'm just saying
I always say, if, if, if you've had a bad experience with weed, stay away from it. It's not you. It's a kinda like alcohol too. Like some people
Right.
They, they have that, like, I think I might even have that. Like I've learned over the years that I can have a, like one or two beers or I don't really drink at all. I like the taste of it. I'll have a, you know, cocktail every once in a while, but I know I can't drink. Like it's just not good for me. Like some people, you know, if I have two drinks, I'm, I'm having 15. You know what I mean? There's no, there's no stopping me, you know? It's like one of those things. So I think, I think we all need to know our limits on that stuff.
So for 90 minutes, there's this uncut footage out there, right? That he's walking around and he's in this psychosis, right? And I'm just saying, it could have been crack. It could have been synthetic, uh, it could have been anything, but he was in his zone, but he wasn't violent. He ran into people. He didn't hit nobody and he was running away from the cars. He was like moving funny and, and then his wife had pulled up in the truck. And he opens up the, he looks in the back of the window of the truck. He opens up the hatchback and he just starts running. He was scared. I'm talking about scared like of his own shadow, right? So he's in this, if you watch the video, people, it's insane what he was doing. And now he, they get a call. He's walking in the street. He like, he starts walking across the street, like back and forth across the street. And he's ducking from cars, like so cars would go by him and he would like flinch, you know? Think the cars are gonna hit him. And um, someone called the police and salute to the DA. The DA supplied the 911 terror tape in the uh, the news press conference. He supplied it and they said, there's a guy in the street that's like, you know, acting kinda wild. But it wasn't a call for violence. It wasn't a call for nothing like that. So now the cop comes around the corner, sees him. Now obviously there's no, back to Kelsey, right? Um, the woman from Andover, the police officer, back, there's no fucking body cam. So th- this is what we're saying. Like we're in 2025, you guys ain't got no body cam. So we don't know the di- the dialogue of the conversation. So he rose up to him. Now by the eye test, it looks like he's trying to help the dude, right? Like, you know, listen, calm down, whatever you're going through. And guess what? Francis runs. He runs, but it's not like he's running because he got warrants. He's just fucking out of his mind. He runs from him. So they catch up to him. And again, they don't arrest him. Now usually when you run from somebody, right? Mike, especially a cop, what's the first thing they do when they catch up to you? They fucking arrest you, right? If you run from them, they're grabbing you, but they don't do that again. They start talking to him again. They're kinda like, it's kinda like they're antagonizing them. And I don't wanna say the wrong words. He wasn't a threat. So now they're talking to him again. No hands on their guns, nothing pulled out like this, none of that. And guess what? He starts trying to run again. And they catch up to him again and they don't put him in cuffs. And they walk him back down to Bradford Seafood, like up the street from where it happened. They start walking him down. Now, the only time he was, the only time the threat happened is when the police officers hit the panic switch and all the other cops rolled up. So now he's trying to get into Bradford Seafood. Now keep in mind, this day is like 90 degrees out. Hot as shit. This dude got a long sleeve shirt on, hat, the whole thing. Now Bradford Seafood, when you watch the video, ladies and gentlemen, it looks like it's a small restaurant. It looks like they're trying to save him from going in there and disrupting it. But in all actuality, it's actually spacious in there because me and James Jackson, journalist, award-winning journalist at that. We went in there and it's, we're thinking that he knew how spacious it was. It's kinda like a deli setup. Where it's like, you, you know, there's one pot, a restaurant, and then the other pot, you could just order what you want.
Bakery, I think to the side.
Yeah, like, like, like that type of setup. And the bathroom's right straight across. And keep in mind, it's 90 degrees. This dude just had a couple of runs in him, right? And he, he's been walking around tripping. So now he's trying to get in there. Now at this point, he's telling the cops, listen, man, what are we doing here? I ran from you. I don't wanna go with you. Kev, Kev said it best. If they're telling them, hey, we wanna get you an ambulance. We wanna check you in. We wanna get you checked out. You know how it is. I'm not doing that. Get away from me. The cop reaches in his back pocket. Now first instinct is where, where was his phone? His phone was in his back pocket. He bugs out once, you know, like what you grabbing my phone for? And he, and the car, and, and now keep in mind, ladies and gentlemen, when you see Jigga, Francis Gigolati, this dude looked like John Cena. This dude was ripped to the core. He looked like Arnold Schwarzenegger back in the day, 76. Like crazy, ripped up biceps on top of biceps, like competition type shit. You know how it is, Mikey, like that type of shit. Levels, not planning fitness at 10 o'clock at night, counting all your macros and shit. So this guy, the cop reaches in his back pocket and he, the, and then, you know, the cop's trying to pull him back from getting inside Bradford Seafood. Trying to pull him back. And so he does one of these to the cop and that's all they needed. Now they throw him on the ground, but now when they throw him on the ground, Mikey, and I'll put a bow on it and I'll pass the mic. When they throw him on the ground, he didn't say, hey, I'm gonna fucking kill you. He didn't say, if you let me up, I'm gonna punch you in the face. He wasn't screaming, fuck you pigs. There's seven of them there, the Goon Squad. They probably all worked for the sheriff's department at one time and they thought they was in Middleton. That's what probably, I, I, I'm willing to bet some of them were Goon, part of the SRT, the security response team at Middleton jail. I, I bet you. Cause a lot of them do that. They do the, they do the Essex County Sheriff thing and then they become cops, right? Cause the way they had him down and he's screaming, I can't breathe. Help, help, help. And all they had to do was put him on his side, man. We got Scotty McGinnis that's always in the chat who has, you know, experience in this type of situation. And they didn't put him on the side and then he stopped breathing. And um, and that's it, man. And we watched him scream, help, I can't breathe. Right on camera, right in front of us. So my thing is this, people, when you watch it, don't, don't fall into the stigma part of it. You know, he wasn't out there looking for that. And you know, they need to, they need to be held accountable for it, period.
You brought up that stigma thing with Haverhill too, cause where I grew up, a lot of people would go there to get, you know, a crack. Let's be serious. Nickel Street, they used to call it, you know, and here.
God damn.
I think that stigma still
What do you know about Nickel Street? Money making Mike is on Nickel Street. Ah, damn, Mike. Sexual limitations, you're good.
Yeah, it wasn't me, you know, I, my, my street where I grew up.
Come on, Mike.
It was like the most rural, like people had trailers. They li- literally lived in trailers. You go to that street now, it's all mega mansions. They're all, all the trailers gone. It's funny, like it's just, so I, I grew up in like, you know, trailer park central, basically, you know? So you know how that goes.
Yeah. So I have a video, I have a video on my page, ladies and gentlemen. Nat, uh, um, Natalie, if you could go search the video, we talked to the family and put the video up in the chat. Um, we went out to, it, it shows you in everything I'm talking about. We go inside the seafood place. We talked to his aunt. We talked to Becker, his first cousin, and we talked to Michelle, who is his fiancee. We talked to Becker, his first cousin, and we talked to Michelle, who is his fiancee, who's there, who's there. Yeah, we have a video on it. Do me a favor, populate that video, share that video, leave comments, get that algorithm going. Um, what, you know, whatever your vice might be, do whatever you gotta do. Um, and you could, and and this. And then the video's out there, you go on my page and just tune in with us, stay locked in with us because we go over it a lot. And uh, yeah, so it's, you know, Becca, his aunt. You know, keep in mind, all three of Francis Gigolati, Francis Gigolati's mother, all three of her children are dead. So to 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 go on back to put some more context to what, um, if you're just tuning in now, put more context to what Kevy Kev said. Kevy Kev broke down how there was just tragedy in this family. So his brother, they got fit, so. Francis Gigolati's family lives out in Plymouth. So they was out there in the, you know, out there swimming. And he got lost eleven years ago, he got lost. Well, no, more than, I think it happened in twenty, so in twenty twelve it happened, twenty thirteen it happened. No, twenty eleven it happened, excuse me. In twenty eleven it happened, he drowned. They don't know what happened to him. He went in the ocean, got, you know, just swooped out. They never found him. And then in twenty sixteen, the cops came to him and said, we found remains. So it took ten years for his brother and his brother was named Tony Gigolati. Then his sister was named Catherine. R I P Tony and Catherine Gigolati. And then in Methuen, this happened, like this happened like three years ago. She got in a hit and run. In in Methuen, a car hit her and dragged her and she died. So he lost his brother, he lost his sister. So now the moms, who's not in the best health, she's in a wheelchair, lost all three of her kids. Now, just get to know the family a little bit. Becca, the aunt, auntie, we like to call her, um, and Michelle, great people. Um, they don't look like they're on drugs to me. They look like they're just ordinary folk. And we got to understand something. At the end of the day. There's a murderer out in Norfolk County on a ten thousand dollar bill. His name is Mizzy Cash. He just did a video called First Day Home. And he took the footage of him getting released on bail and he's in the video counting cash.
Yeah.
And and there's influencers like ten ninety Jake, big dogs in the game, million subscribers covering him. And they got the wrong info, they got the wrong information saying he beat the case.
Yeah.
They think he beat the case. He didn't beat it. And at the end of the day, what's gonna happen with Mizzy Cash? Cause they don't want to put proc tobacco on the stand and none of that. They're gonna come to him with an offer he can't refuse. And he's gonna take it. He already got three and a half years in. He's gonna end up with another ten piece and he's gonna be out. So my point is, look at this. Look at how messy the Commonwealth is. You got Brian Walsh, a serial killer, basically, right?
Yeah, that guy.
Scumbag, killed his wife. You got Mizzy Cash, a rapper. Who probably got mad at Marquis Simmons because Marquis probably said, you ain't even from Dorchester, you're from Milton. That's how this shit goes, man. It's corny as that.
Little comment online, right?
That's it. And then he rolls up, really? Because keep in mind, let me give you a backstory on Mizzy Cash or Miles King, ladies and gentlemen, on the Young Jerks. And I know the Young Jerks will appreciate this. See, Miles King, he got his head blown up. If you think fucking LTL heads fucking blown up. And you think, and you think the Glarus heads blown up, this dude, what happened was. Four years ago, Wallo and Gilly, you know who Wallo and Gilly is? The two influences? Well, Wallo and Gilly, Gilly used to write for Lil Wayne.
Million dollars worth of game?
Million Dollars Worth of Game podcast. They just signed, they signed a hundred million dollar deal with Barstool. So basically they're, they're like for the culture, the hip hop culture. And Dave Portnoy made a power move to tap into that community. So they're getting all, they're getting all the bookings, but at that point, they're doing what JFK's doing. They're going state to state and they're doing the podcast kind of on the road. So what they were doing was when they went to Boston, they put out a tweet, anybody got any music? That, you know, if you got good music, we'll play it at the beginning of the show. Well, what, what didn't you know? Mizzy Cash, you fucking made it, buddy. He sends the music in and they play it. Not only do they play it, Mizzy Cash's song, A Million Dollars Worth of Game, guess. Two that they were interviewing when they played it. Jason Tatum. So now you got the star of the show, Mr. Eighteenth Panam himself, dancing to Mizzy Cash. About a year later, about a year later, I mean, excuse me, about a couple of months later, excuse me, a couple of months later is when that murder happened. So I can only assume, because Gilly doesn't know the difference between Dorchester, Massachusetts or Lawrence, Massachusetts. He's just saying Boston. So we know how it gets in Boston, right? Oh, you're not from Boston, you're from Lynn. You're you're from Salem. So he's from Milton. So probably was something as simple as that because now he's getting, he's getting, getting held to, he's the new Boston guy. He's that bu- and people, the the inner city kids from Roxbury, Dorchester, Four Corners are saying, yo, bro, you ain't Boston. You ain't Boston. They weren't hearing it. So I don't know if Marquis was one of them, but his ego was inflated and he made. A fucking mistake. So three and a half years he does in jail. But now when he, now Scapicchio, who does what she does. She gets him out and you think when he gets out, he would go to church. Or give to the homeless, but no, he doesn't do that. He makes a song called First Day Home.
In the limo with his boys and yeah, I mean, that was just, that was sick.
So murder one, yeah. So we just, you know, the main thing is the system, man. There's gotta be accountability, man. And that's, and that's what it comes down to, you know? And and we're trying to parallel them all together because it's all the same umbrella, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. It's fucking dirty. They've been double jeopardizing dudes for years. I'll give you an example. And Mikey Crawford, my man. Well, they don't do it now, but they did back in the day. You get caught with weed back in the day, right? What did they do? They arrested you for a fucking roach. They arrested me for a roach before. They want to search a car, they find a roach. Probable cause, they'll arrest you for, they'll arrest you for the roach. But now, guess what? You get arrested for the roach, you go to court, you don't want to deal with the bullshit. So they say, yo, cop out to a hundred dollar fine and get the fuck out of here. What do you do? You you sign the paper and you want to go home and you go and you leave. But then guess what happens? Now, that's your punishment, right? A hundred dollar fine and you get out of there. But guess what happens? About two weeks later, you get something in the mail and it's the Registry of Motor Vehicles. That says Commonwealth of Massachusetts across the fucking thing. And they say, you're right to drive a vehicle's been suspended for six months. So wait a minute, let me get this straight. I just got in trouble and copped out to a hundred dollar fine and now you're fucking jeopardizing me again. Saying I can't drive. They've been doing double jeopardy in the Commonwealth forever and that's what we stand for. So fuck these people.
Is that, let me, let me ask you that, because uh. Cause I got busted back in the day. Like I said, I got the continuing without a fine. It was like basically what you said, like a roach. It's actually a little pipe, but whatever. But um.
How much money did you have?
I didn't lose, I didn't lose my license. Like, is that, is that for like the, what is it?
How much money did you have on you? Cause you money Mike.
Damn, money Mike.
You know what I had? It's so funny. I had a, back then I was doing shows too, remember, like, you know, booking events and. I had this thing called the Bean Town Mel Town going on at a club called Good Times, a big competition with bands and uh, we had a Budweiser rep. And he gave me like a stack of stain tickets. Remember stained? They were playing.
Oh, yeah, stained.
So I had like five hundred friggin' stain tickets to the House of Blues in the back trunk and the cops are searching.
Been a while. I gotta play that on my show.
Hell is this? What the hell is this guy? He's got financial advisor shit. He's got tickets, like, is he a ticket scalper? Like, what the hell is this? I'm like, dude, I I tried to bribe the cop. I was like, you want some tickets? I'll give them to you for free. I'll I'll be.
And he still arrested you?
Yeah, he, and he, I could tell he was thinking about charging me with bribery.
Oh, wow.
But it's, but it's superior. It's funny because when I'm in the jail, I'm listening to him. His superior is like, that's a bullshit charge. Don't, don't. The the guy was being cool. He was just saying, you can have some tickets for free.
Booking, booking tickets. Hey, do you remember, Mike, do you remember the guy, uh, King of Pot?
That's Michael Malta.
Yeah.
That's my boy. That's my best friend I was talking about.
Here we go.
I went out.
He wasn't here for the opening. Kevy Kev wasn't.
Here, I, I was talking about Michael tonight. He's my best friend.
Talk about him again.
No, I want to hear what Kevy has to say.
Yeah, man, I met the dude, man. He he was cool as shit, man. I mean, leather jacket, fuck a chain wallet. Fucking, he was, he was down to earth, man. I went out and seen him at the House of Blues, man, fucking. I had a great night with that dude, man, out there. It was a good, good time.
He's one of the reasons I'm here tonight. He's the reason I'm here tonight, Kev.
That's so awesome, man.
You see how life works?
Yeah. He told, he's the guy who told me I'd be where I'm at right now, ten years ago, and I didn't believe him, you know, like.
You know, and 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 I look at that guy, man, and and. You know, when I, when I met him, the way he talked to me, handed me a cop mic. When I seen you, the night at. JFK's broadcasted live at that establishment.
Hold on, I gotta stop you real quick. Not JFK's, the fuckery donut shop, our thing. That was our thing, man. All of us here, all of us. That's everybody, bro.
That's right.
Never, never, never just point me out. It's everybody. Go ahead.
Well, well, I will say this. I thought, when you handed me your Young Jerks card.
That's crazy what you were about to say. Go ahead, man. I'm sorry.
I've, I thought, I thought of. Get the King of Pot, bro, because.
You thought of Mike Malta, dude? That's fucking crazy, yo.
He was sitting in a chair, we started talking.
That's crazy.
And he went in his, he went in his vest and he gave me a card. And I stood back and I looked at that, you know, and uh. Yeah, we had a blast, man. We had a blast.
So funny, because when you bring that stuff up, I I'm just realizing, like, like. New ways he influenced me, I didn't even think about. Like, when you said the card, I didn't give him your card, I gave you a sticker.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
These stickers, right? I give them out everywhere I fucking go. And I I I raised a lot of money with Karen Reed with the stickers. And you know who that came from? I didn't even think of, it was Michael Malta. Cause that's what he used to do. He'd have rolls of these stickers. He had cards too. You you might have got one of the cards. But he also, he had the K O P stickers. He, I still have them. I have rolls of K O P stickers that he gave me that I'll never throw away. I have a shirt that his wife gave me that I wear every once in a while. Uh, I drink, we we got so much K O P stuff that I just. Like, yeah, he is so special. It's amazing you said that, Kev.
I love the fact that you got a story, because the opening of the show, Mikey talked about uh, Mike Malta. And how the influence he had and how he misses him and how, you know, he's not here no more. And the fact that you have a story and you're saying that when he was passing out the cards, that's who he reminds you, yo, this is just wild, man.
We're the gods.
He's talking to us, man. And and that's back to.
He's here, he's here.
Yeah, it's, that's how it is, man. That's how the universe works. And like, that's what I'm saying, Mikey. That's what, when like, when people go, when people talk shit. Like on these, on the internet, they don't understand like, like who you are. You know, how you, you know, we were talking about it the other night on our show with how how you pass out stickers. And I'm like, Mikey's now. Static does the same thing. Static selector don't have to pass out stickers. But everywhere he goes, he'll be like.
Oh, dude.
Here's five stickers.
Funny. And it's like, yo, bro. VMAs one year and I, and I, I saw him for a second. And what's he doing? He's, he's hitting the pole with the flyers. And I was just like, oh my God, he's huge now and he's still acting like he's not. I love him.
Still, yeah, that's what he does, bro. And and that's, and that's just, that's who we are. And that's like the thing is how people don't understand how easy they had it. They, you know, it's like, you know, Will did a four hour live the other day. Did an angle and he got all, you know, twenty-two hundred people to watch him. Do you know what we used to do just to get a hundred people in a room to watch us?
People.
You know what I mean? Ten people. You know, so like, we're blessed, man. So. I just always try to keep that on frontline, how blessed we are.
This is all gravy, you know, it's, it's, it's like funny when some people like, you only had a thousand people watching live. And I'm like, only a thousand?
Only a thousand. Have you ever, like, I tell people, that's why I call it the flight. I'm like, have you ever been on an airplane with a hundred and fifty people? That's a packed flight. Right. You turn around, it's fucking babies, grandmothers, yeah, or a nightclub.
Or a nightclub with five hundred people, that's a big night.
Dancing in the back.
Kevy Kev dancing, you gotta be, it's so great. And like, you know, it's about the quality of people and shout out to my long gamers and shout out to the Young Jerks. All the jerks out there. You know, um, that's, that's what all that matters, you know what I mean? And um. And that's who I try to zone in on is the long gamers and 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 you know, in in your crew, the jerks and the turtle riders, the real diehards that understand the work that goes into this. Because what we try to do is we try to dig from that survival kit, right? And we try to bring that old school vibe back, like the physical. Like way it used to be back, like play the music and have fun and smile and 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 kind of like feel like you're in the moment with us. Instead of being all stiff and and acting like we're bigger than everybody else. And that's what I don't like. I'm just a guy who flips, I just flip my shit open and I just want to kick it. You know what I mean?
Yeah, classism sucks. I hate it. I hate when people act like they're better than people based on. Money or positions of power or whatever it is, you know, it's just, it's ridiculous.
Right. But man, Mikey, man, I really do appreciate you, you doing this because the family's watching and um, you know, Becca. She's, you know, she's a wreck, man. And uh, she's very smart. Becca, you gotta have her up on the show, man, even if it's for like forty minutes. Um, and and just talk to her. I already put you over, told her that you're, you know, you're you're very, you know what you're doing. And um. She's just, she's very good at this too. Um, and I'm glad that I knocked, you know, I got that out of her. And now she kind of knows how this works and she can start going on these platforms to speak. But she's a very nice girl. Um, and she's very passionate to get justice for Jigger, for sure.
Definitely. I mean, the biggest thing with this case is. The, the only thing I can say is that we are the voice for Francis. Francis can't speak on this no more, you know? And um, you know, James has talked about this as well. You know, the, the, the corruption and the, and the, you know. Painting a narrative is very, very similar to the, to Karen Reed, all right? But what we've got here is we got a, we got a suffocation that was broadcasted on television. All right? And, you know. James gets passionate when he speaks on it too. And it's, and and what I'm gonna hit off here is that, you know, we seen this on video. And. We didn't see that happen with John O'Keefe.
No.
You know, we're still waiting for an answer. This is like, you know, John O'Keefe's justice. I I hope and pray to God it doesn't turn into an unsolved mystery. Which happens. But we seen this live. You hear this guy take his last breath.
Last words.
His last words. And. It's not, it's, that's not the same like John O'Keefe. Like we want answers. We want to know. What is gonna be done? What, what, what? What actions are gonna be take, taken now? I mean, we can say, you know, oh, uh, we gotta review our training. When it comes to that, oh, we're gonna hire a, 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 you know. Mental health uh, section in the, in in our department to handle cases like that. Um, I mean, we, we want answers just as bad as the family wants answers.
And it comes down to that mental health, right, Mikey? You know, and that's, that's the main thing. It was a mental health issue. And like, and 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 I'm so happy that this did happen. Um, with LTL and that was my plan, right? Cause I think that LTL, you know, we all got mental health issues and he admits that he's going to counseling. And things like that. And um, and I'm not trying to name drop LTL and make it, but you know, everybody's been watching that particular show. So we're here now, so. I'm gonna speak on it. But I'm just saying, I give props to LTL for going to counseling and doing all that. Because most men won't. And that's awesome that he's doing that. And um, and that's what I'm saying though, like. There's so many people that are sicker and su- sick and suffering out there and not necessarily on these drugs, like. Like they could just be prescribed clodipins and, you know, taking too much of them and drinking alcohol and, you know. And and or they could just be messed up in their head. They can't get it together. Um, and then, you know, you got to understand, like, we got to think about the younger generation. Right? That's what we got to think about. I mean, because this man Gigolati, Francis, was only forty-three years old. He realized, like, damn, man, life just went by. He probably just woke up one day and was forty-three. Like, what the fuck happened? Now you got all these young kids now that are twenty-five years old and they got all this shit coming at them. You know, you gotta look a certain way, you gotta have this. They got the rents through the roof. I mean, I don't even know how the younger generation is gonna make it. And then like, you know, back when we talk about the weed, some of the weeds, like way high potency. All this information's coming at them. How are they gonna digest it? You know, DMs, group messages, um, receipts. I mean, I, I know people who don't even have iPhone storage because all they got in their phone is fucking receipts. It's like, yo, bro, like, erase that shit from your phone, man. Like, what are you waiting for? You waiting to try to blackmail somebody? Calm the fuck down. Like, that's how we're living now. Like, you know what I mean?
So it's like, social media has whacked out everybody. Especially even adults and especially.
Even adults. And so like, we got to think about the kids, right? Like, and I have kids. And so don't, you know, so so don't James and and so don't Kevy Kev. And like, what happens when. Something, you know, they they get down or they get depressed and they're just having a bad day. And. What, the cops are gonna fucking think that they're on drugs or think they're a threat and stand on their neck and kill them when they're screaming help? You know, or, or how about you do the right thing like Kelsey, right? You do the right fucking thing like Kelsey. You go out, you get a husband, twenty-eight years old, you have a baby. All of a sudden, you could postpartum, you don't know what that shit. All of a sudden, you could postpartum. You don't know what that shit is. That shit hits you, man. Woman go crazy, man. That postpartum's no joke. And all you men out there, if you're having a baby right now, if your girl's pregnant and you're at the fucking bar right now, drinking, talking shit, go home to your girl, fuckface. And go rub her feet. Please. Right?
Sounds like my girlfriend.
No, but you know what I'm saying? Like, but, but I, I'm just, I'm just saying, like, this woman, and all of a sudden she gets a knock at the door and it's the police. She's thinking, hey, these are my, these are my buddies. They scoop up the baby. We're taking your four month old baby. The baby was still on the titty. You're taking that connection away from the mom, from the titty, breastfeeding? Like that connection, we, you can never, you can't tell a woman that, you can't tell a woman about that connection. Us, we, you know, that connection's different, man. That's a whole different level of shit right there. Know what I'm saying? Like you, you're a dog walker. You see how the dogs are with their, with their, their family and shit.
Like we just had a new baby in the family. Not my baby, but uh, you know, grandson, step-grandson. So, yeah, I mean,
You see what I'm saying?
Imagine if that baby got taken away from the mom.
And then she goes up, gets the gun. We don't know what happened, but the point is her world's flipped all upside down. And she's being held without bail for what? For what? Because opposed, that's what we do in the Commonwealth. We ain't, we ain't gonna help her? That's mental health. You're putting her in jail? So if tonight, I know Bredo's gonna try to flip it. But if tonight they release it for mass general, she's going straight to framing here. That's fucking crazy.
Awful.
You know what I mean? So it's, it's, it's all, it's all together, the mental health and everything, man. It's just a dirty system, man. We need to speak more about that, man. And just have context to it.
There's so many, so many times when people are having mental health crisis and it becomes a legal nightmare and they end up in jail and it makes it worse. And then they're homeless and then we're dealing with it and just, instead of just like you said, addressing the mental health issues and giving these people some support and love, like to me, it drives me crazy being a wrestler. Like I look at some of these cops and I'm like, really? If, if you don't have someone, like I, I could, I, I, I know the guy was huge. I'm sure, like you said, he was jacked, but most of the time I'm looking at them and I'm just like, how easy is it just to cuff somebody? Like, you know, why do you have to slam them down face first? That's what the stuff that bothers me a lot. I, I feel like they're, they try to protect themselves so much. And it's like, and you're gonna harm somebody because you're trying to protect yourself so much. And it's like, maybe in this case it was different, they felt because he was so strong. But I want to know what's going on in Haverhill because you, like you said, you've been covering this, you showed up there. You went into the restaurant, you talked to the cousin, there's been standouts. I, I uh, you know, have covered some Haverhill politics in the past. I even know like one of the city councilors who ran for mayor. Uh, I'm just wondering, like, what are the city council doing? What's the mayor doing? Has there been any discussion? Or even uh, you know, city council hearings, anything going on in the city of Haverhill about this?
You wanna speak to that, James?
Yeah, well, I mean, from what we heard, they had, like JFK said, they had a um, ninety minute video. Now, mind you, the video they have is edited, edited video. It's, it's all edited, put together. Now, when we had his niece up here, she told us that you know, they let her see, the family see the video. Uh, not the public yet. So JFK and I asked, were you happy with what you saw? You know, was there anything for us that would help us? And she says she really couldn't speak on it yet. So I guess they're, you know, they're doing their investigation still. They're not really releasing much. It was, the only thing I think that was um, released was the what?
Jigga. Jigga was released after.
You want me to play? Yo, Mike, you mind if I share the video on my thing? Can you let me do it?
Oh, yeah. You know how to do it? You just hit the present and I'll
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah, I just, yeah, you gotta let me, yeah, I'll do it and you just accept it. I'll pull up the file when he's getting um,
Yeah.
At the place. Just to put some
It sounds like not too much is going on at the city level.
Yeah, so nobody's really doing anything. Um, and, and I don't know if that's because it's, it's investigation going, but I mean, I shouldn't say nobody's doing anything. They're doing a hell of a lot. The family's trying to get standouts as far as, you know, like all that. But as far as the politicians and all that side, they're not doing anything. I don't think. Doesn't seem like nothing is moving. But the standouts are moving. Every Saturday, they're doing them. And um, you know, we're just trying to raise more awareness and get the standouts bigger and get some answers at the end of the day.
Now, now I'm looking up this park. I'm wondering if this is the park that we got escorted out when my brother was playing.
It's right next to the police station. Yeah, it's right next to, it's downtown.
Is this like kinda where Building Nineteen used to be kinda?
I don't know. I don't, I don't remember if they, I'm not really, I'm not too familiar.
Yeah, no, I think it's fur- further in town, Mike.
Okay, so it's a different park. I'm looking at it. I'm trying to, I'm trying to figure out where it is in Haverhill.
Yeah, cause she said something like, we might go back to the original spot where we were before the original park or something, so.
This looks like, oh yeah, it looks like it's more downtownish area. Maybe? Am I right on?
Yeah, it is downtown. Yeah, it is.
Yeah, oh yeah.
Cool. I li- I like Haverhill. Haverhill's nice. It's, it's funny. It does have like a bad rap, but it's actually very, very nice. It's, and it has like kind of improved, I feel like over the last
Yeah, I mean, and you know, it's, it's, it's got in a, in an industrial setting. You know, you still got some of those old big, you know, wooden buildings that were factories downtown and you know, it, it, it does uh, it does have a, a, a good side of community over there, you know? Every town or city's got their bad spot. I mean, you know? You can't judge a town on that.
No, definitely not.
No. I pulled up the video. It's in the, it's in the
Oh yes, let's play the video. I got it. Let's jumping in here. I'm watching the chat tonight. Thank you, everybody who's here. I saw uh, somebody who knew Francis was in the chat tonight. I want to thank them for being here too. Uh, we just got a super chat. I wanted to thank Melissa. Melissa, thank you so much. She says, watching you guys swap stories generally enjoy, respect each other last night, brought me so much joy and laughter. Thank you, Mike, for all you do. Keep making that money. I know I got so excited. I talked too much last night. It's funny how comfortable I feel with these guys. They, they got me talking. I'm like, I know, I'm listening back to this and I'm like, I talk too much. I think I was annoying actually. They were so good. These guests, the, the panel. I enjoyed this last night. This is why I'm playing it again. Uh, thank you for the super chats tonight. Deborah, the Canton Chronicle. Dennis and uh, Melissa, thank you so much. Alright, let's get back to the video and uh, I'll get off the screen here. Let's uh, hold on, let me uh, here we go. You wanna play it? You got it?
Yeah, you got it. Good. I got it. So I can stop it and stuff. So this is him right here. He's running from the police right here, right? This is the second time he ran. And like, he's not really in a full sprint. Like he's just, he's out of it. The girl's chasing him, the cars following him. They catch up to him, right? Now look, he's running from them. They catch up to him right here. They can arrest him for whatever they're gonna arrest him for, right? I don't even know at that point what he would be arrested for, but this is what happened.
Jaywalking.
Like, look, they're talking to him. He's got his hands up. The cops like this, you know, touching him, always putting his hand on him. And then it escalated quickly. They never arrest him. They're just talking to him. And I end up walking out. Now, at this point right here, they, they already put the call out. They put the panic switch out. Dude's not cooperating. Send backup. So now all these dudes are coming here with the panic switch, you know what I mean? So he's not the threat, obviously. Does he look like a threat to you right here? Hell no. When all the boys pop up, that's when shit's about to get crazy. So he's trying to get away from the cop. Like you see him walking away from the cop. He's probably saying, now if we had body cam footage, right, Mike, we would know what the fuck he was saying. But we don't. But the thing is, why ain't he in cuffs? What's he being arrested for? Like what are you guys trying to do? It's a mental health situation. We get it. But still, why not just let him go on his way? Cause then, then it's about to get ugly. That boy, cause he got with that boy. You hurt? Be easy with that boy, cause he got issues. Be easy with that boy. Make sure you be easy with that boy, will you, hurt?
Jump quick.
You see, you see?
Is that, is that what they gave for video or did you edit like?
No, that's me. I edited that. I, that's my edit. That's my edit. But I mean, basically that's what it is. You know what I'm saying? It like they walked him down to this spot. Now, now where he was walking, they end up just keep walking him. Now all the boys show up and now they all start walking him to this spot. And then he tries to get in. There's a longer video. You're gonna have to pull it up on YouTube. I don't have it. But this is the gist of it. So he's on the ground, man. It's seven car. He's screaming help. Listen to him scream. And now the dude's over him. Now keep in mind, the person say, I He's saying, be careful with that boy, right? So let me rewind it, what he says. So the cop agrees with him. That now that dude
That's just a bystander watching?
Yeah, he's the one that filmed it. And he actually got arrested and got big black eyes. I got the pictures to show that. I'll show you what happened.
For filming this?
Yeah, allegedly. I'll show you the picture. Check this out. So it escalated quickly. Like I said, if you're gonna arrest him, you had the chance. With that boy. You hurt? Be easy with that boy, cause he got issues. Be easy with that Be easy with that boy. He got issues. He's going, yes, I know. Okay, you know.
Cop right here says, yes, yes, I know.
And he was
Make sure you be easy with that boy, will you, hurt? I don't think it takes a whole homeboy out, no. We're trying to So be careful with him, hurt. Be careful with him, not to hurt.
Try not to hurt him, I'm saying.
This is another angle, Mike. You see the guy with the bucket hat on? That's the guy who's saying be easy.
Red shirt.
He's filming. That's the guy who's saying be easy with that boy. This is a different angle. And the girl's like, hey, back up, back up. For what? What's he doing? Was she a cop?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that's the question. Why is two detectives there?
See his feet? You see his feet?
Look at his feet. That's it. He's
That's it.
That's it, right there.
I want you to listen close. I'm sorry, James. I want you to listen close to what the guy who's filming this says. What he sees, if you can hear. He said, oh, he's dead.
He just need to speed wiggle out.
He said, he's purple, dude.
Now here comes his fiance.
That's his fiance right there, Michelle. There you go, Mikey.
R I P Francis Gigolati.
Yeah, R I P.
I mean, why couldn't they just stand him up?
Yeah, seriously.
I couldn't have first called.
There was seven of you there.
Just unhumane.
Especially for somebody like him too. Like you said, don't, what, what's the crime?
Nothing.
Public disturbance?
Exactly. Yeah. Wasn't even a public, I mean, he didn't do anything.
I know.
A man in the street. He's jaywalking.
Yep.
Look at his face. Look at how scared he was right here when he's on the ground. Watch this.
And Mike, he wanted to get in that, he wanted to get in that restaurant, Mike, for some fresh air.
Look at, look at how many arms are holding that. He's already getting purple there, Jake. He's starting to.
I mean, how's he the threat? Who's the threat? Are the police the threat or is Francis Gigolati the threat? At that point?
Police are the threat. The police are.
Look at his face, man.
Another question. Does anyone think he's resisting? So there's no reason for what they did, man.
You know, this could have been your brother. This could have been your brother, your best friend. Your son, your grandson.
I'm gonna show you what's inside. I'm gonna show you inside there, Mikey. Of what it, what it looks like inside the place. So you get an idea of what's inside and why he was trying to get in there.
Or is it the same one, I think?
No, that's the same one. I didn't get it yet. I'm about to pull it up.
Oh, here.
It's up there right now. This is the door to get in here. He knew, huh? Look at how big it is in here, huh?
Now look, this is this That's the same fucking rug too.
Yeah, same rug.
Door to get in here. He knew, huh? Bro, look at how big it is in here, huh?
Got the bathroom right there.
Speak up a little bit.
You have the bathroom. You wanna run straight from here to the bathroom.
You would've run right to the bathroom.
You got this too. It's like a pick.
A what? Yeah, you can set a pick. So he knew there was a big, he knew this place. This place is big inside. Take a look, take a look. Now, when you see the other video, I, I could find it on YouTube if you want. If you want to see the video of the whole shit go down, like him walking in the spot, if you want to do that, I can find it. But at the point is, this is, when they took him down, you could see, there, there's a, there's a, they released footage. They, they released footage of when they actually took him down. Like, you know what I mean? You seen him on the ground. They have footage of him getting thrown down. It looks like if he goes inside there, inside here, it looks like um, you know, he would be on top, he would be on top of the um, he'd be on top of the patrons in there. But look at how big it is.
Right? And then there was an island right here. Could've got around and you got all this space right here.
Look at that space. So it, it looks like he was trying to get in there to get around that spot if I were to guess, because it was ninety degrees out that day too, Mike.
See.
You know what I mean? It was kinda like
Yep.
You know, and it's like, it's big in there, man. It's like he, this is like the spot, right? This is Bradford seafood. This is where they go.
So he had all that space, right?
He had all the space anyway.
So now we know why he wanted to come in here.
He might've known the people too, Jay.
Now I'll show you, I'm gonna show you the video of the owners, um, people who worked there that watched it the day it happened and what they had to say.
Yeah, she was there.
I'm interested if they know him.
Well, I'm about to show you the video of the people who is right there and what they say. They, they break it down. So I'm about to pull it up right now. Here it is, Mikey.
I don't see any cops hitting. I was here.
Yeah, yeah.
But when the guy said, I can't breathe, I can't breathe.
I can't breathe.
How many times would he say, I can't breathe?
Doesn't have gun. He doesn't have a knife.
No, nothing.
So that's his, his heart. He was like so, you know?
Yeah.
It stops.
Now keep in mind, she's watching this. Like she's seeing this right in her face in real time. And the way she just described it, how he looked up and like they were on top, like he couldn't breathe. Like she's seeing the dude like, like she could see that he couldn't breathe. You know, so if she could see it, they could see it, no?
Sad, huh?
The cops, they don't give a shit.
They don't give a shit.
So those circles, they can do anything.
They could do anything. You're right. Thank you for the words.
Yeah, thank you. Cause I know uh,
Yeah, you're right here.
People calling like
Are they calling, harassing?
Yeah, I have a guy, yeah. I said, hey, sir, we don't call the cops.
You didn't call the cops.
Somebody out there.
Someone called the cops, yeah. They had the phone call. They had the phone. They played it. It was a guy who called.
They started roughing him up.
The cops, that's what they do. They don't care. Nobody like.
Police brutality.
Brutality. Thank you.
Man.
Horrible.
And you'd think it would be more, you know, the news plays what they play. We already know, we learned that from the Karen Reed case and all that, you know, the mainstream media. Um, I think that YouTube and these channels, Young Jerks, um, you know, us. Obviously Turtle Boy. It brings more, more light to these stories and this is what we gotta do. We gotta keep spreading awareness. We gotta get it out there. These, these assholes need to be held accountable. The same way Proctor was held accountable for doing the shit that he did when the Karen Reed case happened.
I mean, hey, Mike, I mean, not to throw a crazy spin on it, but I mean, what's the difference between that and George Floyd?
It's pretty similar. Very, I mean, this looks even worse actually, because there's like so many, like George Floyd, you could say is one guy, right?
So I got a video right here.
The, have you put it up yet or is it? No.
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna screen share it.
Okay.
Oh, where am I? Sorry, I'm in the wrong place. I'm gonna screen share it. His family speaks. So we'll play this. So we'll play this.
Oh, yeah. He said old school place, right?
Old school place, old school vibe. You got people that older working here. I think he might've knew the people and that's sad.
That's the same one.
Um, it's right here. I gotta remove this. You got the wrong one. The screen share.
So, oh, I got a screen share?
Yeah, it's on, it's the screen share, the other one. Let me remove this one.
What's this one, maybe?
Yeah, that one right there. Right there.
Who cares if one more light goes out in the sky of a million stars? It flickers, flickers. Sometimes. It's easier said than done.
This is his aunt. Francis Gigolati.
What's up with the Haverhill police out here? What's your view on them? What do you think should happen to them?
Yeah, I think the ones that did it tonight, the ones that did it tonight, they should be gone. Me and my sister think that they should not be working on the force. It shouldn't work with somebody that is in that, you know, it could happen to anybody, you know? And now, I don't know. The Haverhill police are just, you know, they're bullies.
Have you heard anything from them?
Nope. We never even heard anything.
Now, what's going on with Francis's services?
Um, we're working on that right now, you know? So finally got him back and, you know, hopefully it'll be up. We'll find out this week exactly when it is.
That was the services. It was just this past Saturday.
Working with his fiance and, um, my sister to get this done, get him taken care of, you know?
If you had one word, like just one word to describe Francis, what would it be? If you could come up with one word or a few?
Um, super outgoing, very kind guy. Loved everybody, you know? I just, I just even now I sit here and go, I can't believe that he's still going.
That's great. Sorry for your loss.
Sorry for your loss too.
We're gonna continue to bring awareness for our long gamers out there. Appreciate your time, Auntie. Okay, we'll see you again soon.
Please, all of you, come out, come out, please. Thank you, guys. I really appreciate it.
He wants everybody to come out, right, James?
Absolutely.
Appreciate it. It was definitely an experience. It was, um, you know, it was up. We got to meet Francis's mom, which was really sad. Yeah, Francis's fiance and, um, his aunt, his cousin. It was just, you know, we got to feel like how he went to the waterfall and we got to see how that was and.
I went down seven police officers on top of a man's neck screaming help.
No. He wasn't, he wasn't shooting. He was shouting. That's what I like to say because I seen a video where somebody was shooting. Yeah, that's a threat, but Francis was no threat. He was shouting. He was shouting, help, help, help. When someone shout, shouting, help, help, help. I mean, even as an innocent bystander, I think I would've wanted to jump on one of those cops.
Funny you say that, because Too, uh, Too Tall said that someone should have threw water on the cops or something.
Something.
Besides, just.
Just stand there and tape it.
And picking up their phone.
That's this generation, Jay, unfortunately, you know?
Man, who we got here today?
Too Tall, live in Uncut.
Too Tall.
What's happening now? He was a good friend of Francis. They called him Jigger, right?
Yeah, Jigger. I used to call him Gigolati. I used to call him, everybody used to, I used to call him Gigolati.
Gigolati, nice, nice. Now, can you share some stories about him and tell us a little bit about him?
Donate stuff to the homeless people, give. I done literally seen this man give a jacket to a homeless guy because he was cold one night. That's all I'm saying. When he was walking and I'm like, that's what's up, you know? And that encouraged me to give when I see people, you know, I give people a dollar now and stuff because everybody needs help. And that's something that he used to do. Regardless of anybody's struggles and everybody's background, you know what I mean? There's a lot of stories going on there that ain't true about him and stuff, you know what I'm saying? He was a good person, man.
Let me ask you this. What was his spirits like? How would you describe how he was moving out here?
He was moving like a grown man, to be honest. He was doing, you know, he had a business with his partner, Louis Isaac. I'm sorry for putting your name. Um, he was doing the right thing, you know what I mean? It's just like anybody else. He was, uh, always smiling, always helping his family out, always being there for his moms, his everybody. Anybody, nobody. I understand that when people dying, they thought he was a good person. Because there always, nobody's a piece of shit when they die. But now he was a real good person, you know what I'm saying? He wasn't that. Everybody just has a bad day, man. Everybody has a bad moment and this could have happened to anybody.
To anybody. And, um, you know, you're from Haverhill. What can you tell us about the Haverhill police out here? What would be your description? An unbiased opinion, you know, we, there's good cops, there's bad cops. But, you know, based on experience, you know, what do you think should happen to the police officers in this case?
Well, I think they, first, first of all, that should happen to, happens to anybody else. You know, they should be in jail. They should be locked up. They shouldn't be getting paid at home right now. You know what I mean? And I, I, I'm a taxpayer. I pay taxes. So I, I, my taxes shouldn't be still paying for the paycheck to sit home doing nothing, facing a murder charge. Yeah, there's some good cops and there's some bad cops. But right now we got seven bad cops. We gotta, we gotta get rid of, you know? They could've just stood him up, man. He could've yelled, stand up, yell for help all you want, stood enough, breathing everything, you know? But we got seven bad cops.
What's the temperature like out here? You're out here every day. You know, you're on the side of Francis. What's the temperature with the police? Meaning, how have they been acting? Have they been harassing? They've been supportive? What has it been like?
They've been harassing, a lot of harassing to keep it 100. I'm gonna keep it 1,000. They've been harassing. They don't, they wanna stop it. They wanna like keep people intimidated around here because for so many years, they've been getting away with breaking the law. The cops haven't because the internals of fear don't, they just, they don't, they're corrupt themselves. This Haverhill PD is corrupt and he harassed everybody. They don't want people, the little girl, that's why everybody got chalked today because they told the girl that she put it right in chalk in public.
And chalk.
So that's why everybody came out today to write in chalk, you know? So, um, we're just trying to support the family and stay true to the cause.
His fiance.
Wow. First off the bat, I wanna say sorry for your loss.
Thank you.
Uh, horrible, horrible situation.
She was there that night. Yeah, absolutely. I'm just so, I'm so shocked. It's been three weeks and a day and, um, I, I just.
Check it out.
Like I said, I'm beside myself. Um, I have, we, we want justice for Francis. Um, we're not getting anywhere right now. We're not getting, uh, any police reports. We're not getting any answers about anything. Um, and these police need to take accountability for what they did.
Absolutely. Let me ask you this. How was Fran- Francis moving out here? Meaning, what was his spirits like prior to his passing?
He was born and raised in Haverhill and, um, he just loved it. He, he knew a lot of people. A lot of people knew him. Uh, everyone loved him, no matter where he went. He was always quick to help somebody out if they needed it. If somebody was moving and he was walking by their house, he would say, hey, do you need any help? I'll help you. Um, he would help out the homeless. He would just, he's very giving, caring person and he would do anything for friends, family. Um, he was just an all around good guy. I mean, he's, he was one of a kind.
Um, I was just talking to Becca. He was in impeccable shape at one time. What can you tell, speak to that? He's dedicated, huh?
My god, I, yeah, absolutely. I mean, he was very dedicated to working out and keeping in shape and eating right and taking his vitamins and yeah. He, he took pride in his appearance, um, always, you know, dressed to the T.
He looked great that day too.
Yeah, yeah, he did. He did. He was just a very, he was, he was the greatest. He really was and I, I miss him tremendously and it's so hard. It, it's very hard just trying to make it through the days without him. It's hard.
So you were there that day. Let me ask you this. What did you see exactly?
When I, um, well, they had the, the street blocked off, so I pulled aside and I ran up the hill with no shoes on. By the time I got up to him, I heard him screaming, help, help. And by the time I got to the top of the hill where he was in front of, um, um, the Bradford seafood, all, all I could see was seven cops on top of him. And his legs like dropped to the ground and I could hear people in the background telling me that he's dead, he's blue, he's this, he's that. And I was screaming in disbelief. And I went around to the other side trying to get to him and two of the cops were trying to block me from going to him. Um, and all I could vision, I could see his face turned to the right of me and it was all blue. That's the last time I saw him. His face was blue and the cops continued to stay on top of him.
Now, when they cleared the scene, you, did you still stick around after that?
When they, I, what I happened is I went to the hospital and again, they tried to keep me from, uh, seeing him. I went into the room and I grabbed him by the hand and, um.
I'm sorry.
And, and I just, I rubbed his head and I was like, please come back to me, please come back to me. And he was, he was already gone because he was already dead in front of Bradford seafood. But, and that's what took the ambulance so long to bring him to the hospital. It was a 20 minute ride and I.
20 minutes?
20 minutes because they went the long way and I was already there with, uh, my daughter waiting for him to come in and, um. And, and they didn't even want me going in the room and I was, I wasn't gonna let anybody stop me from going to him and just holding him and just one last time. And it's very difficult and that's.
I'm so sorry.
That's what I get. I, I can't get those hurtling screams out of my head or the vision of him blue. And, um, I think about it all the time and the videos just keep resurfacing like every two seconds.
Thank you for doing this.
Yes.
And I'm so sorry for your loss and this is real emotion, ladies and gentlemen. And we're gonna try to get justice and we are gonna get justice for Francis.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wow.
That's it, man.
That must've been tough, JFK. I mean, I.
Yeah. Pounding the pavement, Mikey, just like old times where it's a Mikey Malta.
The emotion, you know, like the, just, you know, it's hard, like I.
Yeah. I mean, I don't know these people. I don't, let's be clear, ladies and gentlemen, I don't know these people. None of us know them. And, um, so it was definitely, you know, it's, 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 um, it was kinda awkward at first, you know? Here we come, we're gonna shoot this thing and it's like, you know, they're like, what are you doing with these cameras? And, you know, who are you guys? And now they understand, but you know, it's, it's a tough thing to explain what we do, right, Mikey?
Yeah.
You know, so it's like. But yeah, you know, I.
Figure it out.
Yeah, I know Turtle Boy started, Mikey. We've been rocking for two hours and 10 minutes, but I appreciate.
Started at eight tonight. He started earlier.
Oh, did he?
We, we.
He did it on purpose.
We have all the long gamers here on all three channels, boo.
Yeah.
We're up against Yanetti. And Turtle Boy. Yeah, Yanetti was on at like 7:30 tonight on an, uh, Defense Diaries and then Turtle Boy was on at eight. So anyone who's still here, you're the real people.
Yeah, and that's what it is, you know? And the replay crew's gonna come through. And if you're on the replay crew, we appreciate you and, uh.
Love you too.
And if you're on the premiere, if you're watching this on a premiere, I go by the name of JFK.
I go by the name of James Jackson.
And I go by Kev.
Yes, uh, Mike Crawford, Young Jerk.
Yes.
You money making, Mike.
What do we call it? Making Money Mike?
No, Money Making Mike.
Money Making Mike. Money Making Mike. I'm always making money.
Fucking put you in a headlock real quick.
Yeah.
I'm always making money.
Put you in a sleep hole. Watch ass sleep.
I heard that last night. That was funny. That was funny.
You know, Mike, Mike, I'll tell you, man, I was watching you the other night, man, and, and, you know, somebody had asked you something and you said, you know? I wake up in the morning, man. I'm, I'm happy just to have 60,000 subscribers or, you know, however many subscribers you had. And, and you, you said, you know, your, your head, your head ain't blown up, man. I mean, uh, you, you, you kinda paralleled back to, you know, maybe when I was wrestling and, and, and my high school years that I might've been, you know, hey, what? What the fuck, you know?
Yeah.
But I hear you, man. I mean, it's, uh, you know, I, I give you a lot of respect, man, because you, 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 you're a solid dude and, you know? I see what you're doing, you know? And, um, it, it brings good energy, man, you know?
I appreciate that. I feel the same way about all of you.
And you've been at it forever, man. You know what I'm saying? From radio to banging on the concrete with the bands to the weed activists, we're booking bands. Like you was, you was out there around the people banging the concrete hand over fist. So I mean, like, you know, you earned your spot, man. And no matter whoever wants to, you know, talk shit and say something, they just don't know. And if they fuck around and try to swing a punch, they're gonna find themselves on their neck.
Yeah, they will. Unless they're bigger than me and they know how to fight. I mean. The thing is too, it's like, I realize I got 60,000 people behind me too now. So it's like, that's the other thing. It's, it's just, it's a funny feeling, but I, I love it and you guys too. You've grown so much this year. That's the other thing. It's, it's just, it's a funny feeling, but I, I love it and you guys too. You've grown so much this year. I mean, look at, look at. How great you're doing and it's, you've been doing this for a long time too JFK and.
Yeah.
You've done some good stuff over the years. I've been watching it and I just love it. I'm glad that you were here. You did such a public service for, for, for me and everyone watching tonight to just go through this again. I'm, I wanna go out there. Like, I don't think I can get up there Saturday, cause I got this dog I'm watching, unless I bring the dog. I don't know, maybe, but um. I definitely wanna go out there on a Saturday.
Well, I'm coming, I'm coming to Boston next week, so um if, yeah, yeah, so I don't think I'm gonna be out there. Yeah, yeah, I'll be out there that weekend. So I'll be.
This weekend or next weekend?
No, this week, so Monday I'm, I'm flying up. So I'll be in Boston this weekend. I'm gonna terrorize fucking uh Kevin and uh James. James gonna hide from me. Every time I come to Boston, he fucking hides.
I know. JFK wanna make, we, he wanted to take you to the gym and you're just like, no, I'm not going to that.
Nah, we go, we go, we go on, we go on, we go on, we go on muck ones.
Yeah.
We run a muck.
Oh, run a muck.
Run a muck. About the last time we stuck into the Chris Webby show. We went up to the Chris Webby show in Hampton. They were like, you on the list? We're like, yeah. We're like, go, get the people back there, tell them JFK's here. Yeah, man, we was up there in Hampton. Yeah, we was up, we was in the club and we couldn't believe how many people he had up in there. Goddamn Chris Webby, he had like eight hundred people. He drawed like eight hundred people. I didn't think he was that big, Webby, but you know, and I know Webby. I, I was like, wow, I was blown away up there at um, what, what is it? Wally's?
Wall, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, he had that place jamming. Yeah, we had fun up there. There's a little casino up there. We went up there, me and uh James, we, we was gambling a little bit, so. And we had some fun and shit, you know, and uh, oh, so of course. We're on the beach and this poor little Spanish dude, he's like, so James had a, James had a couple in him. Your man JFK, your man, your man JFK was driving, so I don't drink and drive, especially in New Hampshire.
Is weed? Has James spoken his weed around you, JFK?
Hold, hold on a minute. So let me give you, let me give you a story, story time. So we, so we, we, we start off. In Lynn and we're at Tony's, the same place we did the bar, uh the, the show. And we're in Tony's, he, he takes Uber there from where he's at and I'm, I'm out in the area of Lynn, so I meet him at the, the, the bar. We drink a couple of Stella's. And I say, listen, man, you wanna drive up to Hampton? It's a beautiful night. It's like this, it's like, well, you guys can't feel how it's feeling out here, but it's like eighty degrees at night. So we got the drop top. He's like, come on, let's go. Man, I drive all the way to the highway. This dude turns around, is like, yo dude, I need some weed, dude. I'm like, yo, bro, why didn't you tell me before we left the city? He's like, let me Google dispensaries. I'm like, bro, you know we're on the fucking highway. Yo, this dude Googles dispensary. He's like, it's only eight minutes away. I said, man, he made me turn all the way around, right?
Not in GPS dude.
GPS there, we banged you, we hit the dispensary, now he's got the weed. So now he's in the game. So we go up there. And we have fun, we're chilling. And this poor little Spanish dude comes up to us and he's like, yo B, my girl took my phone and she left me here. And, and I'm from Lawrence, so me and James, you know, we're like, alright, what do you want us to do? He's like, can I use your phone? And James like, yo, man, listen. You ain't, you ain't got no restraining orders against that girl, do you? Cause I, you ain't getting on my phone, which is, he's on point with it. So then James is like, but yo, man, you're from Lawrence. You sure you'd ever been to Hampton before? He starts drilling this dude. So then he gives him the phone. He's like, I'm gonna let you use the phone, but listen, man. If you run away with my phone, I'm gonna punch you right in your fucking face. I said, you god damn.
James.
I said, god damn, James.
Shit, disclaimer.
I'm like, yo, James, man, he was telling the truth, man. He's just a young ass dude.
I thought he was gonna run off. I thought he was trying to scare me.
Again, huh?
Yeah, he started, I said, what the fuck are you crying for?
That's what James did. He was crying and Ja, so he's talking to me at first. So then James comes walking up with the slice of pizza, you know, looking the way James looks, the hat on, smelling good, looking good. He looks at the dude up and down, he goes, yo, man, what you crying for, man? I said, god damn, James, leave the dude alone, man. Fucking James Jackson, man. Let me tell you, James Jackson, James Jackson is a one of one, period. You're always gonna have a good time if you're with James Jackson.
Right. He's happy too. You're a happy guy.
Yeah. But you know, you didn't know though.
What kind of pizza you get? Would you, any be, which place do you go to?
I think we went. Yeah, it was, it was, it was right next to the casino. It was like a little.
Yeah. We didn't, we didn't do the Chris, we didn't do the Christie's thing. I know they got the Christie's thing, yeah. We didn't, yeah, yeah, oh, that's, yeah, yeah, we didn't do that one. That's the next beach over. But I like it up Hampton, man. It's like, cause it's nostalgic, you know what I mean?
Oh, big time.
People, and it was, it was busy out there that night too.
That's again, that's my stomping grounds.
Oh, you, you, you ran that beach.
You know, when you first get your license during the summer, we just drive that strip picking up girls.
Yeah.
My friend had a convertible, girls jump in the car, you need to take them down to the beach, make out with them, you know, you know. Hold on, you're like eighteen, nineteen. That was the place to be. Drink, right? I mean, you know, what else are you gonna do? Right.
God damn, make that money.
I loved it. You know, that, I loved uh, yeah, Salisbury's great too. I love Salisbury, like you said, Tripolis and Christie's. People wanna know like, I, I'll get them both. I'll get them both. I love them both.
Yeah. Yeah, and that's the.
KOP, KOP used to, Michael Malta used to vacation uh for a week on Salisbury Beach during the summer. Wicked Italian. We go up there to, to hang out with him one night. And we're doing the kids at Ski Ball. I said, we gotta go get, you know, Christie's, Tripolis. We gotta get some pizza. We eat the pizza. He's like, this is the worst pizza. He's, he, he hated it. Michael Malta did not like Christie's and Tripoli. It offended him as an Italian, but yeah, I loved it. He was laughing his ass off, cause I was so excited about it.
I mean, it is what it is, that pizza, right? I mean, it's got its own little, it's been around forever. It's not, it's not uh, it's not uh, what do you call it? Uh, Reggine Isos, Ciantapios. But you know what real good pizza right not too far from you, Mikey, is Vovos, V O V O's. I think it's V O V, it's on the beach, Swambskate. You can only get one size and it's takeout. But they got hooked up down there, bro. I was there, I mean, I did a live out there. They got, they got, they got this uh, the seats out there now. You know what I mean? I, I ate the whole fucking thing, man. Seven slices. It's, that's how big the pizza is. It's seven slices. I ate the whole, I'm telling you, the pizza's very good, but, and they got um, so you got the regular Italian pizza and then they got the Chicago deep dish. The big square ones, if you like that.
The sky likes the squares.
God damn JFK.
Yeah. Oh, you're about to, you're not too far. You're about to jump in the whip.
I might, I might have to go over there. I, cause I.
Yo, I'm telling you, Swambskate is beautiful. It's funny because we say Yanetti, Yanetti jogs down the beach. A lot of people see Yanetti down, down Lynn Beach. And the funny thing is, there's a sign that says entering Swambskate and on the other side it says entering Lynn.
That's where he turns around.
That's where he turns around. He goes right.
Well, you know, it's funny. I have, I have some dog customers who uh, I got them in, they, they, you know, she's a single woman, uh. Divorced woman with a couple uh kids, older kids. One of them's a, a, a young woman too, so the two of them. Got wicked into Karen Reed because I told them about it and they just started watching it and uh. They also have like all these side businesses they do. One of them's flowers. They were the, they, they delivered flowers to Yanetti's house one day. And they were like, they were losing their minds. They're like, oh my God, we found out Yanetti lives around here. We're, we're actually delivering to him. We didn't realize he's one of our customers, so. There you go. Like, he's everywhere.
Well, yeah, he is.
Great guy.
Our boy Jimmy T ran into him and uh, in Salem, right up by your way. He was like at one of the courthouses over there in the square. Jimmy T seen him and shit, yelled his name.
I know I'm gonna run into him eventually.
Oh, you'll run into him, yeah.
Yeah.
He's out there.
It's a small world up here.
So let me just segue real quick.
You, you mentioned, Barstool got mentioned on uh Jessica's show. Portnoy's from Swambskate too, which is.
Yeah, he's, oh, you see, he's in denial. See, that's the thing about Swambskate people. They're in denial, like Swambskate is Lynn. You got no choice but to go to Lynn if you're leaving Swambskate. If you're going anywhere else, you're going to Lynn. So most people, they hit the Lynn way and they're still in denial. They're like, oh, it's the Lynn way. You're still in Lynn. But the funny thing is, if you go into, if you go down Essex Street, you're in the hood. I mean, you go from. Enter a Swambskate to right into Lewis Street, Essex Street, uh Lewis Street, and Broad Street, it's a wrap. You see it all. And it's like, so like.
Drive so many times. It's so funny.
Yeah, and, and, and the thing about Portnoy, he went to Monty's. Monty's is in Lynn on Eastern Ave.
I love Monty's.
Yeah, so he talks about that.
Do you go to Monty's? I love it.
I, I, I don't really do Monty's like that, but I mean, they got the good bar pizza. You know what I mean? The real skinny slice.
So good and, and their little salads too. They got the.
Yeah, good anti-pasto, yeah.
Yeah, I, I love that.
I'm a Westland dude, so I never.
The only thing I don't like about Monty's is the, the parking. It's always like, you know, Russian elect trying to get in and out of there without getting hit.
Yeah. How do you feel about Higgins with the fuck around and find out t-shirt, Mikey?
I want, how weird is that, huh?
That's.
Like, what a character. I hear what you guys were saying last night. You'd like to hang out with them. It's, it's hilarious, like.
Well, you know what? See, the thing about Higgins, man, right, is that you know he was on match.com, March of twenty twenty-two, right? So March of twenty twenty-two, right after this shit went down, he was on match, match, match.com and he got with a girl for eighteen months. So right, so right after that happened, he, he goes on match.com and he plucks a check a hundred percent. I talked to the girl. Like, like, and I'm not gonna, I never throw her out there, but I had crazy conversations and then, and for eighteen months, he hit it from her. And right around that time, so right around the year mark. Is when the shit started leaking out that he was involved and he started changing. So it's right around that time. So when he first got with her, he used to send her pictures of him and Big Bad Brian A with guns. And, and, and so we have another female that we know, right, that lived in the Stoneham area back in twenty sixteen, right? And he, he used to try to get with her, cause he used to go to the LA Fitness with her. So he used to get with her and he gave, so when we first started doing this, me and James, we get a, we get a message and it's an ATF hat. An ATF pin and a card that says Brian Higgins. So that's what he does. He got all this merch and he tries to give it to the chicks. So when, when we started talking about the merch from the chick from Stoneham. The chick from Stoneham that was getting the merch from him, that knew him, that used to go to the gym and basically every morning try to get with her. That woman popped her head out and said, it's true. That's what he does. He gives away merch. So like, he would go to restaurants, right? And, and when he would leave the restaurant, he would leave a tip and he would leave like an ATF coin. That had like the Celtics on it, the Bruins on it, would say ATF on it, and he would say, that's a collectible. So, yeah, so he was with this girl and uh. He met her on match.com. So after a month after this shit went down, after a murder, he goes on match.com as Brian Higgins and gets with a girl. And then as that time, he used to send her pictures of him and Big Bad Brian A when they first got together. Of them with guns, all types of pistols, fucking, all types of shit. And then all of a sudden, she said Big Bad Brian A disappeared. He never even mentioned him. Then when he used to go to sleep, he used to put big ass water jugs in front of the fucking door in the cape. And she'd be like, yo, what are you doing? And he was like, ah, you know, you never know. I put a lot of people away. Right around the time started leaking out, he made a big change. And she says she feels mad um bamboozled. He was so crazy that he got on a group chat. He was, he tried to invade her life. He got, so she had a, she had a daughter that was like sixteen at the time. So he tells her, he puts his daughter on the group chat and puts her mother, the, the woman's mother on the group chat and he invades their family. So, so not only is he with this broad, he's basically invading this kid's life. Like, he's going out with the kid's only sixteen at the time. He helped the kid out. Like, this is real shit. This is what he did after a month. And, and, and after talking to her FaceTime, she's drinking wine, telling me this shit. And I told her, listen, I don't wanna hear this shit. And she was like, I just wanna tell you. And I'm like, I just wanna know, what was he doing around that time? He said, he went from everything's okay to don't ever fucking say that. If you mention Karen Reed around me, it's lights out for you. And he never, every time she would mention it, shut up. Don't say nothing. So, yeah.
Everybody's coming out of the work to talk to you guys about, about hate from, you know, the Higgins world. It's uh, you must be under his skin. I guarantee, does he still watch you, you think?
Oh, hell yeah. You know, you know, he called, you know, he called two times, right?
I heard he called the second time. See.
Yeah, he called and he told us to take him off the TV. Yeah, he told us to take him off the TV. So what happens is when he calls, right? He knows that it's Google Voice and that it has a delay. He's not su, see. Let me tell you something, man. Higgins is not a dumb dude, man, you know? And here's the thing. When, you gotta ask yourself this question about Aiden, right? He calls us a six string show. You know, he's a journalist. I don't know what happened with that phone that day when Higgins was chasing the cop. Why didn't he get that phone up? What was Higgins doing?
Fumble and that shit, something. He was, god damn.
Higgins must have scared this shit. Yo, but this is how, but the point I'm trying to make is this is how you know Higgins is guilty. Because if Higgins thought, like, if Higgins, if Higgins thought he had police powers still and thought that the police was on his side. Think about it. He's outside doing whatever he's doing and he sees Turtle Boy drive by. He knows it's a cul-de-sac. He knows Turtle Boy's gotta come back around. If he, if he knew he didn't kill John O'Keefe or had anything to do with his death and he still thought he was a cop and he was in the graces of the police. He would have stood in front of that fucking car with a pistol out.
Yep.
And would have said, stop the fucking car. What you doing at my house? And he would have called his boys up, but he knows he can't do that. Because it's like, no one wants to talk to this fuck. They know what he did.
What's he doing? He pulls out his phone, takes a picture and sends it to fucking KP.
Sends it to KP. So that shows his guilt, man. That's a, that's an admission of guilt right there.
Yeah, sending it to KP especially.
You got a guy that, you got a guy that's, you know. Claiming he's John O'Keefe's friend, sitting in his house, playing video games with his nephew and talking to his girl. He's a fucking scumbag.
Scumbag.
Shit, piece of shit, man.
Kevin from South Boston. I mean, that's the most unbelievable shit because it's like. When that happened, and the thing is too, like, we had, like, we had the issues with LTL. It's like, when we, like, how do you think, like, people always talk about feelings, right? It's the simp, right? Sympathy is the new way you get a hundred to s- subscribers, right? If you simp. And you act, you know, it's just the way it is now. Like, if you put a post up tomorrow, hey, it's Mikey Crawford, I'm feeling depressed. You'll get fucking a hundred comments. Mikey, you can do it. But if you put up a. Comment saying, hey, I just came from the gym and life is great, you'll get ten likes. No one wants to hear you doing great. Everybody wants to hear you doing bad.
You know you're doing good. I know.
Right? It's the simp, so.
Like the money, making money.
Yeah, Money Making Mike. They don't wanna hear you, you're making all the money.
They don't wanna hear it.
Yeah, damn. But, but what I'm saying is.
Like I said, my life's better than ever and I feel like I'm rubbing it in your face. I'm sorry. No, go ahead.
Oh, shit.
But let me just say this, um. So. Where was I going with this? So.
Uh, about the, the simping or, you know, being, if you post.
Yeah, so what happened was, right, like, we don't simp, right? We don't cry about it. But when we did the reenactment video, keep in mind, so we go to the waterfall. And we do the reenactment video. Keep in mind, it's me and James Jackson. We gotta get there at a certain time. First off the bat, we gotta beat the traffic, ladies and gentlemen. You gotta beat that denim, that, from, from where we're at in the North Shore to denim. If you get it there at the wrong time, it's gonna take two hours to get to denim. So we're beating the traffic. So we get there at twelve o'clock in the afternoon on like a Tuesday. So now we're in there, people are looking at us already. They probably know who we are, who knows, right? You know, we set up the tripod right underneath their face, right underneath them. We ain't got permits. We set up a tripod, we're mic'd up. We do the reenactment video. We sacrifice the aesthetic. We know it ain't Hollywood shit, but it's good enough. We do the reenactment video. After we leave there, in and out of there. And there's another pot I'll leave out, but anyway, we go to Boston. And I say, hey, let's go to the Cambridge Side Galleria. Let's go to Macy's. Let's, let's get into the Christmas, let's get into the Christmas spirit, James. Let's go, let's go put some polos in the bag like we used to do.
Fucking polos in the bag.
Polos in the bag.
Put some polos in the bag. So we get there, we get there and there's no fucking Macy's. And then on top of that, there's no Santa Claus.
No Santa Claus.
Me and James are like shocked. We're at the biggest mall in Boston. This is the biggest one. It's the big, it's three floors. The shit is shut down. It's dead. Me and James are depressed now. We're like, yo, we came here to get in the Christmas spirit right before the Celtics game. We're going down to the Garden. We're like, what the fuck is going on? So now we're walking around. All of a sudden, me and James, we noticed that there's some people looking at us. Just put it that way. Some people are looking at us. And then we, we confront the people who are looking at us and we say, hey, what are you looking at? Come to find out, they say they're best friends with Brian Higgins.
At first they said, they, they, they liked, they watched us.
They watched us.
Yeah, they know who we were.
So I said, well, before we go any further, which side are you on? And they said, we're on your side. I said, oh, really? And they said, I just talked to Higgins three days ago. I said, get the fuck out. Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
So we said, well, hey, how can we bait him out? He goes, well, tell him seaside. Tell him it's Mark S with two S's in my name on purpose. That's all you gotta say. So now on top of that, we telling this guy, listen. We just came from the waterfall. We did a reenactment video. Wait till you see it. Come in the chat. What's your name gonna be? He said, I'll say I'm seaside. I said, alright. So now, we set it up. I get back out this way. About a week later, we do the reenactment video. We post it. I mean, we're doing the live like we did tonight. We're going over the reenactment video. As we're doing the reenactment video, who's in the chat? Seaside. Mark with two S's in his name on purpose. And we're saying, this reenactment video, you can't get over the fact that he was definitely talking to John O'Keefe. You can't say it was the guy in the back. He was talking to this one. Yeah, that's it. We. We know who you were talking to. All of a sudden, we start the show at nine, ten forty-five, the phone rings. Who is it? It's Kevin from South Boston. But here's the thing about the simp. Would you believe? Everybody, the same way they're talking about the LTL versus Clara video, we got the buzz again. We picked up steam again. Everybody's talking about this fucking video, but they feel to mention the people who took the phone call. They, they, they feel to mention that we did a reenactment video. All they wanna talk about is the decorated dude. You wrong, you wrong. Well, wait a minute. What about the, the admission of guilt? What about him calling because we did a video? That showed that he's, if they do it, if the Commonwealth did it, I mean, excuse me, the defense did it, he looks bad as shit. To show the spacing there. And not for that, and tonight, the loophole lawyer, the man, the guy with a hundred and sixty thousand subscribers used our video tonight, almost a year later. Giving us props a year later. Showing, showing the fucking, the spacing. And that's all we were trying to do. So the thing, thing we have with LTL, right after that happens, December eleventh, let's just say December thirteenth, LTL does a whole show called Decorated Dude. He ain't never mentioned our name once. He acted like we didn't even matter. So we didn't simp about it. We didn't say boo hoo. You know what I mean? We just, we stood on what we stood on and said, yo, listen, y'all are fucked up. So Turtle Boy was talking to the Glara recently. About like two months ago. Now, don't get me wrong. Turtle Boy gave us a lot of props and a lot of platforms about how they called in the show and he always says JFK, don't get it twisted. He always puts us over. But when he got into it a little bit, he said, hey, Glara, man. Higgins must watch all of us. He's gotta watch all of us because he just called into the, you know, he called into that show. You know, like, why would he call into that show? So he must have been watching all of us. Cause you know, Glara, JFK, let's keep it real. And James Jackson, they're a six string show. And I'm like, well, that's how you wanna place it, huh? You don't wanna talk about the work we put in? You just wanna skip over that part. You know, but we still don't simp on that. We're the six string show. We don't care. Just like last night, we put in the work. Just like last night, we put in the work and we had everybody talking about us. That's what we do. We put in the work. That's the difference between us and them. So that's what it comes down to, but you know, but Higgins for sure, um. He watches us. And I think, you know, I don't know the connection he has with us, but the reason why he has this connection is because A, the girl from the gym, he knows for a fact we know who she is. And then seaside, oh, he knows. So he feels a certain way. So he felt they needed to call. It had nothing to do with him watching Turtle Boy and, and the Glara.
You know, I mean, I gotta say, how many times has Glara and I have opened phone lines? I've never heard from Higgins.
No, and then what happened after?
I have no indication he listens to us. I, I think he, you got under his skin. I really do. Especially, like you said, those reenactment videos were very, so spot on, like. Nobody was really talking about that. You, I, I give you and Microdot's credit on that. The, like, the two places that kinda just blew that open on that waterfall video. Even me, I was kinda skeptical at first when you were looking at it. I'm like, oh, you're getting into theories and all this shit. And then I really looked at it and I was like, holy shit, these guys are doing it. Like, you, you really, so I think you got under his skin.
Oh, we got under his skin, but not only that, what, just to segue how the influences, like, you know, we get shit. Not only did that happen. We. Turned around and talked about the sound bites. Went before Hank, right when Hank Brennan got on, we said, listen, this guy Hank Brennan is gonna use the sound bites. And we went over the sound bites every single night. And we was telling everybody, listen, this guy Hank Brennan is gonna use everything she said against her. Yo, we lost mad subscribers, Mike, cause people took it that we were disengaged. And we were like, no, she just needs to make a new sound bite. Like, when she gets the chance, now this is before we knew, right before the trial, she was gonna drop this fucking Max documentary and shit. We didn't know that was even in, in the works. Right? We just said she needs to make a new sound because it's still a mystery what happened from the ride from thirty-four Fairview to, I mean, the ride from.
The waterfall.
The thirty-four Fairview. Like, what was being said in the car? And, and, and the very first show I ever did with you, what did I say? I said, what type of time was John on when he got out that car? She knows what type of time he was on. I did, way back then. And, and other thing is people always look over.
Like, on it all, yeah.
But I was, I was the first.
Higgins texts, when he sent in their texts. Yeah, they were sending uh even John texts that night, right?
Yeah. Well, here's the thing. Why did? Yeah. Well, here's the thing, why did, just see, it's one could say, well, she didn't know anything, right? Okay, but then why does she text him the next day? I mean, the same morning, at eleven fifty-four AM, John died. Now, another thing is too, that's always like a mystery is, that sounds like a continuation of a conversation. I'm not saying it is, but it's not John's dead. John's dead, come help me. Kind of as if she was checking back with him, yo, man, he's dead, like John died. Or it was, or or it was sussing the situation out, and she thought he had something to do with it, and she said John died. I'm just playing on words, speculation, doesn't matter. It doesn't matter.
And and I I think too, like, when you, uh, like you said, to to reset the convo, I think it would have been good for her to do that at that point. Yeah, and I think also like.
Well, cause here's the thing, Mike, I don't mean to cut you off, but what I'm saying is, if she would have mentioned Higgins from the jump, from the rip, from the start, would this shit even go this far?
All eyes on Higgins.
You know, and the other thing too, like, I I always think about, there's a lot of criticism from the antis that that Karen freaked out so quickly. Maybe that's why. You know what I mean? Like, I I think that would have been good for her to explain that, like, I thought there could have been something up with Higgins, you know, I, cause I think it's obvious now, right? Think you're, I think you're right on the, right on the mark. I look back at it all, and I'm just like, yeah, I think you're, I think you're on to it. You 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 nailed it.
I'll tell you this, though. People don't do the heel toe for nothing.
With heel toe for nothing, Mikey, you know that.
He did the heel toe, heel toe. And keep in mind, they walked out the bar, right, out the waterfall. They walked out, and that's when he was like, he was like in that, like, in his own mind, right? He looks to the left, he sees punk ass fucking Matty McKay, he sees the Greek, the husband, the Greek husband, Katrina's husband. And all of a sudden, Chris A is is talking, you know, Jen and them walked out, all of a sudden, he does, he's like, this fucking, this fucking dude starting all night, I've been here, and this fucking dude's gonna stop before we leave, and he's thinking in his head, oh, man, I gotta, you know, I I might have to walk out there and fuck somebody up. So he does the heel toe, like psyching himself up. He's in his own mind, like, did you all see that? Did you see this punk ass motherfucker starting shit with me? And then all of a sudden, Chris A, Chris A is the last one to leave the bar, and he's talking to him like this. He's like, yo, I don't know what happened, John. I I don't know, I'm sorry. And he goes wash his hands in the bathroom and he leaves. But here's the bottom line, when that was happening, when he turned around and they're saying fuck you, fuck you, but you, come on, come on, John, come on, come on. Right next to him, dead next to him, sitting right there, twirling her hair, moving crazy, was Jen McCabe.
That's right.
Jen McCabe seen it all. And then Jen McCabe talked to him. Now, why is a cop? He texts Jen McCabe, what's the address? Why the fuck did she call him? He's a cop, that's what he does. He finds addresses. It's only a five-minute ride. If it's a five-minute ride, then how far is a walk is that? What would that be? If it's a five-minute ride, how long's the walk? Minutes, like fifteen, twenty? Right? So I'm saying, like, it's a fi- it's a five-minute ride. So then they're on the phone for over a minute. Karen's in the car. She's hearing this conversation. So then we were all under the assumption, right, that it happened in the basement. Now we're finding out it happened in the garage. What do you think, Mikey?
I don't know. It's a good question, you know, but very likely in the garage. It seems like that's the, seems like that's what the defense thought, considering what they were looking at in those videos. I saw Nick Rocco in the chat here tonight. He,
Yeah, what's up, Nick?
Posted some video of that, you know, of them walking around with Alan Jackson.
What up, Nick? Long time no see. And let me tell you this, and I'll just give the information on the Young Jerks. I talked to somebody. And that person told me, cause when I was on Sean, Sean on the Golf Show, I talked about Julie, and I just did a video on it. It's got like fifteen thousand views, right? It's a recap of me and Kevvy Kev and uh James Jackson about Julie. Julie Albert. Julie. You notice who wasn't there when they did that fucking video? Of all them saying they're they're being battered and bruised and, you know, they they just, they're just witnesses? Julie wasn't there, the donut girl wasn't there. Julie was in the Walgreens parking lot. I said that to Sean McDonough, that she was gonna be the one. Cause keep in mind, at eleven forty-five at night to seven forty-five AM is the shift for the police. So in that window, they needed it, they needed the John's body to be discovered, because they needed to control the narrative. That's why Higgins is at the police station. Isn't that right, Kevin from South Boston? I know you're watching. And Julie was gonna be the one. Because that's why she said, let me hang up with you, Karen, and call Julie. And she called Julie, but we know, when she hung up, when Karen first called her, she said, oh, I was fucked up, I just woke up in a dog sleep, and I said, well, maybe he walked home with Chris. Well, we know, you know, he didn't walk home with Chris, because you talked to him on the phone. You you butt dialed him allegedly a hundred times, looking for his phone, whatever it was. You gave him an address, you know he didn't walk home with Chris. So that phone call to Julie, because she was in the parking lot, right, guys? Show them what that is. She's in the parking lot with the wipers on. Waiting for the call. Cause she was gonna be the one to find John. Because keep in mind, who's her fucking son? Colin. So you, honey, you ain't getting away with this. This is family shit. They think this is the Sopranos. But the point is, I got word by somebody that came up to me, and they said to me, JFK, remember when you said Julie was in the parking lot? I go, yeah. They go, let's just say, you're a good detective. And let me, let let's just say, the person that I was talking to, don't wear a B hat like me. And I go, yeah. And he goes, yep. He goes, that is who's going down. So when they come swoop these motherfuckers up, I'm telling you now, based on this person that I talked to, if it's true, and I can only assume, I'm just telling you right now, the person that I talked to, man, is is one of the higher-ups. I don't know if this, put it this way, you know what I mean? You don't want to fuck with these people, right? And they told me that Julie is in the scope. And I asked them, I said, well, why wouldn't you just throw her in a fucking room? And wouldn't she break? Cause she's the weakest one. Everybody said Julie would break. They said, they said, no. She wouldn't break because she's too scared of Chris A and Brian A. So now back to what we talk about trauma. Think about what Chris A must put this poor woman through. That chick's forty-four last trial. Was she forty-six now? She looked crazy. So think about Julie, man. Julie was right in the midst of this whole shit, man. And here's another thing we bring up. You so-called Julie at four fifty-five in the morning, you say she didn't pick up. So when Lally asked, did she pick up? You say, no. Then she shows up the next morning, and she admits admits that she sees Jen McCabe's truck in the driveway, right? But yet she knows that there's a missed call from her at four fifty-five in the morning. And Jen McCabe's truck's in the driveway, and you still just putting the donuts in the car and getting the fuck out of it. As Kevvy Kev, Kevvy Kev, take it from here.
Yeah, I mean, she's, she shows up, she shows up to put these donuts in the car, alright? And she's greeted by Brian Albert on on the stoop. Hey, why don't you come in for a minute? We we want to talk to you. She says, she says on the stand, nah, I'm good, I'm just gonna head home. Now meanwhile, her sister, or I mean, her best friend here is is there. Is there. The one that called her early in the morning that she's claiming that she missed the call. I mean, you're telling me that she wouldn't want to find out, like, hey, jeez, what's going on?
Everybody on a Saturday.
What's everybody doing here? I got the fucking donuts.
And then she goes in and they say, yo, John was on the, we found John outside. She says, tell them what she says, Kevvy.
She said, she says, um, she says, oh, well, what, what was it? I I didn't, I didn't see anything.
No, when she's, no, she said, they said, we found John outside. She goes, John?
John who?
John who? John who?
Yeah. Like John who? How many fucking Johns do you think she knows?
The one you was with the night before?
You know, it was her neighbor that she, they had conflict with.
Oh, and then by the way, by the way, she leaves there. She said she only stayed there for a half hour. She leaves there, she goes to pick up Chris, she wakes him up. So you mean to tell me that big bad Brian A didn't say, get on the phone, call my brother, wake him up, and tell him to get here? If they had nothing to do with it, so they were like, alright, just go home, and then she let Chris sleep?
Yeah. And you're telling me, you're telling me that night when Chris came home from the waterfall, he didn't lay his fucking head down that on that pillow next to his wife and say, damn, I don't know what the fuck's going on with my brother and fucking Higgins, but
Come on, man.
They were fuck, they were, they were fucking, they were, they're after John. Listen, man, he didn't even brush his teeth.
Julie, it's the fuckery donut shop invading the Young Jerks. If you think for one minute you're off the hook, you're in the scope, and we're gonna ride it on you. No, 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 Julie. Cause when you really think about it, and you look back at that fucking testimony, there's the guilt right there. You mean to tell me you got a fucking missed call from your best friend, so you went out to get the donuts, you're looking right at your phone, a blizzard's going on, right, about to hit. Your friend calls you at four fifty-five, there's a missed call. You get to the house to deliver the donuts, and she's there, and you don't even care. Then when you, you don't give a fuck about that.
And you take off, you leave the donuts in the car.
And then Brian A's gotta stop you. Hey, what are you doing? I was just leaving the donuts in a car that was open. You knew it was open?
Yeah.
Come on, man, that's like, that's the craziest lie.
Why wouldn't you go in the house?
She's the biggest liar because.
Too, right? Yeah.
Bro, because she was, she was.
I want to ask you a question about that person you talked to. Did they give you any type of timeframe?
No, but they also told me, they also told me, oh, oh, yeah, they kind of did. Let me, and I'm not bullshitting. They told me next year sometime, like after the beginning of next year. That's what they said, because I asked them that. When are they gonna do it? They ever gonna do it? They said, maybe around next year this time. They just wait. And then they said, there's a lot of, because I asked, I said, well, why didn't they use that, that, uh, why didn't they say the basement at first? Why they, I mean, why'd they say the basement at first, and they didn't use the uh garage? And I asked, where did it happen? Person told me it happened in the garage. Person told me that Higgins, the way they explained it, I said, the way they explained it, that Colin ain't getting in trouble. Even though Colin was a hundred percent involved, they're going after Higgins. The the now, I'm saying it now. This is what this person told me. Higgins, big bad Brian A, Jen McCabe, Julie McCabe, Nicole. I mean, Jen McCabe, Julie Albert, Nicole Albert. They're going after all, and and Chris. They're saying they just ain't fucking with Colin for whatever reason, they're going after them. That's what they told me. I don't know why. I don't know if it makes sense. The person could be bullshitting just for props, but based on what they look like, based on what they do for a living, I mean, hey, I don't know why they want to lie to kick it when they're already kicking it. But I'll tell you, you know what I'm talking about, James Jackson.
I know exactly who you're talking about.
This shit is wild, bro. I didn't ask for this shit.
I want to hear more after the show now. Now I'm like, we need to talk about the record.
And I'll tell you this, and I'll tell you this. I asked, oh, word has it too, there's more, more video.
Of Higgins. Video of what?
Being in places, being in places he shouldn't be at, being in places that he shouldn't be at. The reason why, oh, yeah, and the reason why, they didn't, they don't have it, the defense never had it, because word has it, the other people.
Feds?
They, I don't know, I I ain't, I don't know nothing. Pickles. I don't know nothing.
People.
The other people, the people, hey, they need it. They 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 need it. So there is other video, and 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 if this comes to, if this happens, like this person says, then you heard it here first. Now, it could all be bullshit. But based on what I know, this person, you think? No. I don't think so, bro.
I don't think so either.
If that, if that happens, our shit's gonna blow up in next year. You should just sit back for a few months and just wait.
Hey, what, why do you liquidate shit? People liquidate shit.
So, so there you go, my bad, my my bad, Kevvy Kev. I I don't, I don't want to overtalk anything. This is just what I know. So that's how it started. I said to the person, if you guys are watching them, what are they doing? Like, are they just living their life? They go, the person says, they're doing what guilty people do. They're acting guilty. I said, oh, yeah? They said they're liquidating assets.
You know about that money making.
They're just watching them, they're watching them move things around, getting things ready for the big bust. That's all I'm saying. Like I said, it could all be bullshit, but based on what I know, listen, I'm not, I'm not LTL, I'm not claiming I'm a fucking journalist. I'm not claiming all that.
You are, though, you are. Even you don't have to claim it. But you know what's funny is, uh, yeah, liquidating assets. Like me, I mean.
They're moving shit around.
Know, you guys know I'm being sued, it's bullshit. But, you know, giving so much to Aiden and Karen Reed is because I had to, like, build up my cash assets for this lawsuit, right? You know, so like, that makes perfect sense. If you're, if you're, if you think you're about to be federally indicted, you might want to uh sell things, so you have some cash to pay the lawyers, right?
All I know is, all I know is this person said, they're doing what guilty people do. And I said, what's that? Liquidating assets. And oh, by the way, when that shit went down between TB and the witness that only got twelve days jail time or something, and pled out to one day or something stupid, I asked, which side is that on? Like, which side does that land on? Like, what got leaked out or some shit, right? Like, who's in trouble? Is it TB and Karen? Or is it? And they said, nope, it's on that side. You know what I'm saying? So like, whatever got leaked out or whatever, like, you know, it's it's, it's not to hurt. It's not, they're not against us. They're against the other people. So, these are the things I hear, man, and and you know, and I take it all in, and and I just, you know, but they're coming. And they said, not just them. They said, there's a whole, the whole shit that they're forming. Some wild shit's about to go down. And they said, to give you the timeline, I'm not even bullshitting. That's what they said. They said, early twenty twenty-six. They said, like, January, February. I did ask them that. I said, when? And they said that. And you know, I don't got to bullshit, I ain't got to lie to kick it. And let me tell you something, Higgins, if you're watching, Higgins, if you're watching, you know exactly who I'm talking about.
Exactly.
Exactly who I'm talking about. Exactly. Let's just say, this person, I'm not even gonna say.
Yeah, just leave it at that. He knows who you're talking about.
Yeah, he knows.
And uh, you know.
God damn, J D.
Hey.
Yeah, so you know, just to get into the Karen Reed shit, we talked about, you know, we've been rocking for three hours. If you want to wrap it up, man, it was fun. We could do this all night, man. You already know that, man. But Mike, man, I appreciate you, man.
Appreciate you, Mikey. You know that.
You're muted up.
Yeah, same, yeah.
Mike, you're muted.
Appreciate the platform, Mike.
Thank you. Yeah, I was gonna say, let's go to Kevvy Kev, James and JFK will will wrap it up. Like, you have any final thoughts, Kevvy Kev?
You know, I mean, uh, if you haven't stood up for Francis Gigolotti, stand up. That's all I got to say, Mike. I appreciate this time.
Kevvy Kev.
Yeah, um, definitely, definitely stand up. Um, what I would say is, first is, you know, RIP Francis Gigolotti. His mom's been through a hell of a lot. The family's been through a hell of a lot. They need answers. This awareness needs to be spread more. And um, it's gonna be. We're gonna continue to do our job. And I appreciate everybody that rocked out tonight. Super chats, I really can't read them, because when I put the thing to the mic, it makes all this noise, and I'm trying to focus on this tonight. Yeah.
We had a lot of good super chats, especially on your uh JFK and uh James Jackson.
I I think I saw Nan and um, I I don't, I can't see this far right now, but Nan.
I just want to say that you're gonna be redirected to bedtime magic. I know James can't uh get on tonight. He's fucked. And I want to say thank you to James, because I put James, I I put James in a tight spot. I said to him, yo, you're doing some oral surgery, toughen the fuck up. And he was like, yo, bro, what do you mean? I said, man, you're gonna have to toughen the fuck up. And he toughened up, man. He he's fucked up right now. His mouth is fucked up, so. I appreciate you, James, for coming up here, because we need you, man.
For three hours, too.
I didn't, I wasn't even gonna say shit. I had the ice pack there, but I wasn't gonna hold it all.
James, you have something coming up tonight, too, James? Uh, oh, there it is.
Yeah, we're doing, yeah, we're gonna do, we're gonna do bedtime magic, man, me and Kevvy Kev. I'm sure Kevvy, because Kevvy Kev's the dancer on the show, so. It's like solid gold, this motherfucker.
I gotta make sure, I'm gonna redirect everyone from.
Yeah, I'm gonna have to take this sweatshirt off, too. Oh, goddamn.
We're just gonna go over some shit, man, play some music for the people, the long gamers. We usually do it after, like, we start at like at eleven, Turtle Boy, people start flying, and we go to like one AM. Bedtime Magic, man, we play so slow songs, and we just, we do it for the ladies, man, and the fellas, man, that, you know, love that energy, you know, and it's a pivot. Something different, you know, you know, we get copyright strike, we ain't making, you know, the super chats, whatever, it helps, but we ain't gonna get no money off the views, you know how that goes, but we play music, and then we put our hair down. we play music and then we put our hair down and we just talk about other shit, you know, and, uh, bring back that nostalgia feeling on bedtime magic with JFK.
I get any, do you have any like, uh, issues with the, with the strikes? I always wonder about those when they come through. Do they have a block you or anything?
Yeah, they do. They try to knock down the screen, but you know, we do it in a way that we learned how to finagle the bagel. Um, where we just don't, I think if you just keep, continue to play music consistently and you're playing it, like they pick up on it, but if you do like how we do it, we basically play the music and, you know, they strike you regardless. You, you know, you get striked and you gotta, you gotta put in a review and say, hey, we didn't mean nothing by it. It's a, it's a big pain in the ass, but hey, it's, it's, it's to us, I feel like, you know, I owe it to DJ a little bit to them, play the music and, you know, and I, I get to know my audience, you know, I get to know what type of music they like, what age they are, like, you know, where they stand and, you know, and it, it, it makes me connect with them. So I'm willing to do it for them, you know?
I'm trying to, uh, redirect. You, you allow redirecting to you, right?
Of course, brother, redirect it. You already know.
Just making sure. Some people.
Yeah. And if you haven't subscribed, Kevvy Kev, seven eight one.
The, uh, the stream, cause I'm not finding it. Say the name of it again tonight?
Bedtime Magic.
Bedtime Magic, okay. So it's like, uh, they used to have that on the radio.
Yeah, yeah. We're taking it all.
David Allen Boucher.
We brought it back. Um, so we play that old Keith Sweat.
James Jackson too. Obviously JFK show off. And already in a.
Smash the like button. Yeah.
Yeah.
How many, how many, um, subscribers did you get, Kevvy Kev? Where you at?
I'm, I'm up to like 327, I think.
I thank everyone for watching tonight. Wanna make sure we get, uh, all the info out on Giga, so people can watch it. Make sure to join the Facebook group. It's pinned to the top of the chat right now. And, uh, expecting an event on Saturday standout in April, 2 PM. I hope people can show up for it. I wanna thank everyone for super chatting us tonight. And watching, everybody who's been watching and subscribing and sharing and all that. Uh, we got a couple more super chats. Thank you, Sarah. Thank you so much, Sarah. She says, rest in peace, Francis. Thank you for replaying this mic. May his loved ones get justice prayers for Michelle and all who love him. And Alyssa, Alyssa M, she sent a super chat. Uh, she, I agree with everything she's saying. This is a good super chat, good point. She says, I'm a few minutes behind, but I fully believe that Higgins watches James JFK show because he thinks of himself as a street guy. So you, uh, so you guys thinking negatively, let me say that again. So you guys thinking negatively of him hurts his ego. I think you're right. I think he does look at us, look at himself as a street guy. And that's probably one of the reasons he called into their show, right? Makes total sense. Good point, Alyssa. A very good point. I wanna thank, uh, Kevvy Kev, uh, James Jackson and JFK Show Off. If you haven't, make sure you subscribe to them. They're on YouTube and X and everywhere else and Facebook. Thank you so much to them for coming on last night. I wanna thank our mod, our mod team, MJ, Sarah, Stephanie, uh, who else am I missing? Uh, Scott McGinnis? Did I miss anyone? Oh, Jen O, Jen O was here tonight. Thank you all. Thank you, our mod team. Yes, I did. Yeah, we've been getting a lot of views on Twitter, actually. Last night was weird too, actually. I'm glad I played it again on Twitter, cause, uh, last night, like at the end of the, near the end of the show, I realized we, we weren't streaming on Twitter for some reason. And so I started it up, like probably the last like 40 minutes of the show. So tonight, hopefully everybody got the full episode on Twitter. Alright, I'll see you soon. I'm not sure when. I guess, uh, I think we're gonna be streaming in the morning. It's gonna be that, uh, we've been, we've been covering a case, kind of. We've been streaming it. Not very much, uh, not much covering it with live shows or anything, but, uh, that Georgia case, we'll, we'll probably be covering that again in the morning. But, uh, I'll see you soon. I'm not sure when. But, uh, thank you so much, everybody. Make sure you subscribe and like and all that before you leave. And we'll see you soon. Thank you, everybody who's been supporting us and sending the super chats. Oh, you know what? There was another Venmo, I believe that came in. Let me just make sure. I don't wanna, I don't wanna forget anyone. I did forget some people last night with the Venmos, which was amazing to see, uh, the money that came in. Yeah, uh, there was a Venmo that came in tonight, uh, from Rich O. He, uh, sent $10. It says, great show last night, Mike. Keep doing what you're doing. Thank you so much, Rich. Appreciate that. Love it. Love it. Love to see the, uh, the donations coming in. And I got another, uh, uh, cash app today from Sarah, Sarah C. She said, thanks for putting more eyes on Francis. Thank you so much, Sarah. That was on the cash app tonight. There you go. So a couple more, uh, Venmos, cash apps and, uh, super chats is well worth, uh, covering in this and getting the word out.